I'll start the meeting. All right. The meeting has been called to order for the Corvallis School Board. And this is our special meeting for October 22nd at 2020. And it's 6:30 PM or 6:33 PM. And with that, I would like to invite you, if you are willing and able, to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. I want to welcome everybody who's here. We have board members and also the trustees from the Corvallis Public Schools Foundation, Board of Trustees. And I want to welcome the audience who are joining us through the YouTube streaming and also those who are joining us through the recording afterwards. With that, I want to note that we value public input and public opinion. So if you want to communicate with the board, you can go to the Corvallis School District, meet the board and send an email. And also, at the next meeting, we will be inviting public comments opportunity. With that, we have really a great agenda today. And the first item is discussion with the Corvallis Public Schools Foundation. It's a commitment of collaboration and to work together. And with that, I want to say on hand that we have our school board members. And I'm going to briefly introduce them. They are, I'm joined with Vince Adams, Tina Baker, Jay Conroy, and Sarah Finger McDonald, I think will join us shortly. And also Jay Conroy, Therese Jones, and LaHoy Wapair. And Mike, I will hand it to you to introduce the Board of Trustees who are with us today.
All right. Thank you very much, Sammy. So I'm Mike Sheets, and I'm a member of the Board of the Corvallis Public Schools Foundation. And on behalf of our Board Chair, Ashley Chavez, and our entire Board, I want to thank you first for inviting us to be here to further our collaborative effort with the Corvallis School District and the School Board to carry out our respective missions. And so, as you know, a spring meeting has been scheduled. And we have divided our 15 trustee-member board into two groups for reasons of meeting efficiency. And so I'm going to introduce those who are here participating tonight. But the Board is indeed larger. So just do a little wave at your camera as I mention your name here, if you would please. First of all, Becca Ghost, Bashir Hamdawi, Mindy Hamlin, Ed Junkins. Couple of you have no Ed, I think. Emily Barton, Amy Johnson, and Sadie Slocum. So thank you to everyone here for joining us. And now I'd like to hand over the virtual microphone to our great Executive Director of the Corvallis Public Schools Foundation, Leif Gifford, who will introduce a very special video. Leif?
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, everyone, for having us. It's really a pleasure and a treat to have a collaborative meeting with you. So one of the things we have the honor and pleasure of doing as a schools foundation is recognizing outstanding educators and through the Golden Apple Awards. And so I'd like to recognize the Pastega family for making these awards possible for the past 25 years through an endowed fund. And we have arrived at almost 100 educators that we've been able to recognize over the past quarter century. So without further ado, we'd like to share the 2020 video from Golden Apple Awards.
Irma has inspired me to be a better teacher and to be a better human. You cannot be around Irma without being a better teacher.
This ice cream makes learning fun. And I just thought I was so inspirational.
Te queremos mucho.
This teacher creates a safe climate for students to learn. He's an equity teacher. This teacher leads the school's LGBTQ+ club.
Her daily practice is an example for all educators of what a culturally responsive teacher should be. We are very fortunate to have such an amazing educator as Gloria Cusalan at Corvallis High School.
Well, when you think about the way that she's connected with kids and served them both in the classroom and our school culture.
She brings that passion and that drive and a commitment to our district.
I think she's everything that we want a Golden Apple to represent.
Julie has become more than a coworker, she's become a friend. And we have a unicorn in our midst. And the Corvallis School District has been extremely fortunate to have her with us.
All right. Thank you so much, Lindsay, for sharing that. And I want to again congratulate Irma Banuelos, Refredo Echeverria, Gloria Cusalan, and Judy Story for winning the awards this year, as well as our wonderful Julie Catala, who won the Stellar Service Award this year. So this was wonderful. As you can tell, we were giving these awards out during March, just when school buildings closed. And so we did the first, what, I think the first three in person. And then, and then two we had to do over Zoom with the Corvallis High School staff, which was extremely difficult. And as you could see, Judy Story was doing FaceTime on her phone, held up to a Zoom call. So it was quite something. Anyway, congratulations to everyone. We're so happy to be able to celebrate them again in this unusual year. So next, I'd like to invite Mike again to share our presentation on the work of the Corvallis Public Schools Foundation since March of this year. And some of our other trustees will be chiming in also to share some of our accomplishments and priorities.
Thank you, Leif. I'm just waiting for the slide just to show up.
Lindsay, are you bringing that up?
Yes, sorry, one second.
Like tonight's debate, they may have used the mute button on me. Well deserved in both cases.
Well, I could do a little of Hamilton while we wait.
There we go.
I am living in a fifth grade class where they've been using Hamilton to talk about the Constitution. So it's been lots of Hamilton.
All right. You don't need to hear anymore.
Okay, so are we, is, are you set up the way you're going to have it, Lindsay? Or should I wait a second?
Sorry, I'm trying to make it larger, but I can't get to it underneath this, this dock here.
Sure.
Maybe F11 will at least make the page large enough.
There you go. That's looking pretty good, huh?
I think we're ready.
Okay, good, good, very good. So as Leif said, we are really wanting to share with you some of the highlights of the work of the Corvallis Public Schools Foundation since March of 2020. And we are, as I mentioned earlier, a board of 15 trustees and a very efficient and hardworking 1.8 FTE staff. It's incredible the amount of work that they can get done, and we really appreciate that. The foundation, a little historical piece here, it was founded in 1996 to expand resources for local schools and inspire learning in our students. We have been meeting virtually since March. So like all of you, tonight isn't our first rodeo in this. We can move on to the next slide there. Great, thank you. As all we are, as community members, parents and trustees, we're continually impressed by the ability of educators in our district to identify the needs of students, find ways that they can help, and to respond quickly regardless of the circumstances. And we certainly know there have been a lot of unusual ones now. This emphasis on helping families overcome barriers to education has been central to our work as a foundation and I think has displayed ways that we can pivot that we may not have even been able to imagine some short time ago. Becca, you can take over with the next few slides, please.
Great. Thank you, Mike, and thank you guys for having us. Very appreciated. So the foundation has been intentionally working, over the last couple of years, few years at this point, to really increase alignment with the district and ensure that we're being strategic and we allocate resources that have been generously given to us by donors across the community. We want to focus the resources in areas that give the most impact. That's really our biggest focus. And COVID has provided the opportunity for us to frankly accelerate that. While we continue to value the individual grant requests from individual teachers who are looking for funding on innovative projects, we paused that for this year and instead shifted entirely to coordinating with the district leadership to strategically target resources. This slide shows a brief summary of what the foundation has done in connection with those priorities through COVID. In the spring, it was $100,000 granted for food security and other basic needs. The summer, $7,000 for academic programs, welcome center staffing, and Care and Connect. And in the fall, $150,000 for racial equity work, wraparound support and services, and parent guardian education. Get the next slide, please. This gives you a little more detail on the spring food security and other basic needs. It was pretty significant. The number of requests for all of the basic needs that our district families did during this challenging time. Go to the next slide, please. We heard overwhelming response from our families that how critical the supplemental food, hygiene supplies, laundry cards, grocery gift cards, and other support was during this time. It was critical, and it really made a difference. So I'll turn it over at this point to Ed to give a little more detail about the summer and fall.
Yeah, thank you, Becca. And again, thank you to the Board and to others for letting us present some really exciting stuff the foundation has done. I want to drill down a little bit regarding the summer programs. $71,000 this summer was put in areas of focus on academic summer programs that could be accomplished virtually, such as math camp and credit recovery. We also provided a grant to keep the welcome center open and funded direct outreach to families through a program called Care and Connect. Now, Care and Connect staff spent the summer contacting students who had been unable to access school in the spring. Next slide, please. "After COVID-19, all our plans changed. I had to graduate this summer. It was really hard for me to keep going. I didn't sleep a lot." This is Nor, a CHS student who finished five courses this summer and was able to graduate because of the online offerings. Next slide, please. "What we were asking people to do was to reach out and to ask, how are you doing? How have things been going for your student? Do you need food in your house? Are you feeling safe? What about your rent situation?" So the goal of Care and Connect was to reach students with whom educators were unable to communicate in the spring. Staff were able to reach nearly 300 students from a list of 388. Staff assessed the mental health status of students, inquired about basic needs, and provided resources for further support. Next slide, please. For some families, school was, or school as an institution, isn't necessarily a welcome presence. Just knowing that we genuinely wanted to reach out and care and understand what those needs are will help a lot for families and students to engage in schools at a higher level. So Care and Connect demonstrated the importance of building trust with families so that students could engage in their learning. I'd like to now pass this over to Mindy. Thank you.
Mindy, you're muted. Mindy, you are muted.
We can't hear you, Mindy.
All right, I'll rewind. My honor to present this check for our fall programs of $150,000. And go ahead and move to the next slide. I'll talk a little about what our focus for fall is. And we had a great process of working with the district leadership to figure out what would be the most impactful and where we really could make a difference in this. The word's getting a little overused, but unprecedented time as we're doing the distance learning. So we have three areas we're focused on for fall. Racial Equity Work, Wraparound Services and Support, which is continuing with the work that started in the spring, that some of the things that Ed talked about, and then Family and Guardian Support. Next slide, please. So the racial equity work is a major focus for this fall. There's four projects that are included in this grant of $55,000. Racial Equity Coaches. This expands work that started at one of the schools to have coaches at more schools. Leadership Pathways for Black Indigenous People of Color staff. So this is helping staff develop in their leadership and as they aspire to take a broader, more impactful role in the district. Expansion of SAFE, Students Advocating for Equity, which we've been funding for a couple of years now. And then More Culturally Responsive Materials, including these two books that you'll see listed there. This book is anti-racist and stamped. Next slide. The SAFE program is a platform for sharing the personal stories. We've heard from multiple students. We featured some of the students at our breakfast last year. And we're really proud to have supported this program. And it's, now we have the opportunity to expand it into the elementary schools. So this is really an exciting focus for the fall. And now I'm going to turn it over to Bashir to talk about the next part of the fall programs.
Thank you, Mindy. And also, I would like to thank the School Board for having us tonight. So this is the second, as Mindy said, the second focus area of this fall. Basically, we're focusing on three. If you wrap the third and the first, the fourth and the first one together. So the first one is just to support our welcome center. And this is where to provide families who need help with the basic needs like food and hygiene and things like that. This program is expected to support about 200 individuals per week. We also provide Wi-Fi technology access to families who need help. And this is enabled through Comcast and again, to help families to help their kids, especially in the time of this distant learning. We also provide tutoring, and this is approved to provide tutoring in different areas like math and language arts for students who need additional support. Next slide, please. This program also trying to provide help for bilingual, essentially, families to provide them with skills and strategies how to help their kids. I think there's a program, it's a virtual program where the school district just to help these families, provide them with the skills so they could help their kids at home. Next, please. So this is a summary of the four programs. So the first one, the racial equity work that Mindy talked about, and then the last two. So this is kind of a breakdown of the different subprograms and these programs with the dollar amount there. I think we're sponsoring about 150,000 across these programs. So this is kind of the breakdown. Okay, thank you. So back to Mike.
Mike, you're muted. There you go.
I even did that to myself. Amazing. Okay, so as to say the least, this has been quite an unusual year of challenges and opportunities. I'd like to invite Becca back to share how we've been pivoting our priorities and strategies in order to address a lot of unforeseen issues. Becca?
Thanks, Mike. I think my role at this point is really to facilitate conversation with the School Board so that the foundation can hear. Now that you have heard about where, how we've been pivoting, where we've been strategic in targeting resources working for the district, what do you sort of think about our priorities, where we prioritize? Are there pieces that you wish we had prioritized highly? Areas that you think we should have looked at? Or is this, we just wanted to have a discussion about what the School Board thinks about where we've been and where we hope to continue getting in terms of district focus? Can I just open it up for anyone on the Board, the School Board, to provide us some feedback?
Thank you, Becca. Appreciate it. And I want to invite the School Board members to, yeah, go through, raise a hand. And we have Sarah, and then Vincent, and then Jay. And then Therese. So let's start with Sarah.
Yeah, I first want to apologize for being late. I was searching for a charger that had been borrowed and didn't have a charger on my computer. And I also want to thank the foundation for the work you did and your ability to respond quickly this spring and summer to provide for our families, because I know it made a huge difference for some of our families who were in the most vulnerable positions as our world turned upside down in March. And I know, as a School Board member, it just sort of hurt my heart to think about those kids who were in that position. And so it was very gratifying to see the community and the foundation step up to help those families with just basic needs so that their kids could keep going. Yeah, I think as we look forward, I don't know how needs will change as we start, like if, if we do, if and when, well, when we return to the school buildings, whenever that happens, how needs will change? What are there, you know, I've been thinking about what would families potentially need in order for their children to safely return? Are there ways that, you know, the foundation could help fill in gaps where, you know, maybe a family doesn't have, you know, enough masks for their kids? Or, you know, I don't, I don't know how, I don't know what it is. But finding a way to continue to support families as the situation changes again and they're returning to school buildings, but under conditions that are not really familiar.
No, that's exactly right. I think even later, I think Sammy will be facilitating a little discussion to help us brainstorm what might that next future step look like. So I totally agree. Other feedback? Should we, it looks like the hand, Vincent's hand is up?
Yep, I'm up. So I just want to express just deep appreciation for the foundation, for the work that you've done. And, but, especially for this time during the pandemic, for working in such close coordination with the district, focusing where the need is the greatest and just the nimble response that the foundation has demonstrated here. I'm just really impressed with how responsive the foundation has been. And, you know, if there's one thing that keeps me up at night is that, is that schools can't do it alone anymore. Our society, the state, our nation, as communities, we are expecting more from our schools than we ever have before. We are asking our schools to pick up the slack for an economy that has failed a broad proportion of our population. And nevertheless, even though that we have, over time, as a proportion of GDP, systematically disinvested in education, and now we're in a pandemic, now more than ever, you know, we need the foundation to fill those gaps in the system and catch those kids. And that's exactly where the foundation has been over the last six months. And it's just, just a tremendous effort. So thank you very much. You know, as I think about where we go next, I mean, I'm really struck by how you're extending to work with families, parents, guardians, and doing education. That's a place that the district struggles to go because we're not funded. That's not our mission. It's to educate parents. That's a systemic gap. So having you supporting in that space may be a place to look to going forward. Thanks again.
Great. Jay, I think, is up next?
Thank you, first of all, to all of you for your foresight and your decision-making and your hard work. I have real mixed feelings because on the one hand, I'm sad that we are spending money. If you had asked us 15 to 20 years ago, is this the stuff we have to, you know, count on needing? We would all say, no, we're going to go to the state and get a lot more money for our teachers. And, and we did that. And now we have the, the ad is that we have it and you decided to spend it in these ways. These are perfect for this terrible, tough times. My suggestions would be around kind of more mechanical. I just cannot imagine, and I know some of you know I do work as an observer of student teachers today. I can't imagine that there will not be a big group of students who will need help in addition to regular classroom to catch up. I mean, it is a tough, tough job today to help educate them. And so hang on, because I believe things like tutoring or special assignments and work is going to be front burner stuff in a big way. So that might be a one thought.
I have one, I guess, just a follow-up question on that. We're hearing really strong support. So thank you. I think this is fantastic. In terms of, at the beginning of the pandemic, you saw we focused very much on basic needs for obvious reasons. And now you hopefully sort of see that we're focusing more on some other very critical needs, but are less kind of the basic needs and maybe more referral and wraparound kind of referral services. So Jay, when you mentioned the kind of tutoring and such, how do you feel about prioritizing basic needs over some of the tutoring or parent education and stuff?
You've done it right. I think you have to do basic needs in terms of helping people wake up in the morning with adequate food and housing and supplies. So hopefully, the economy turns, we won't have that. But no, I think that's, that's a priority. And then we will do our best and you will help us wherever you can in terms of that catch-up stuff.
Right. And I'm realizing, I'm sorry, there's other hands I'm not usually facilitating. So Therese Jones?
Yeah, thank you. So I will defer to the previous comments about the great work that has come out of the efforts of the Corvallis School that has come out of the efforts of the Corvallis School Foundations and say, try to add something new. I think that the pandemic, this particular period that we have found ourselves in, has highlighted for us significant fractures in the service network that many of our families have available to them. And as, you know, is often the case, if you were poor before this situation, then many of the things that families are navigating right now, for the first time, we've got this population in our district that have navigated this all along. And it's a bittersweet situation to be in, in that when something finally happens on a large enough scale to reach the white middle class people, it becomes something that the community can really get behind. My hope in this time is that, and I think our school district is unique. I think our foundation, our school foundation has been maybe unique as well in that we've always had some awareness of the need for those basic needs. And I think as we've tried to be responsive as a district, my hope in this is that we are scaffolding some capacity to continue to make those investments beyond the immediate crisis. When whatever normal means, whenever we return to something that feels more stable, when the ground feels like it's underneath us again, for many that felt like they had a ground underneath them before and then have felt destabilized in this time. My hope is that we've scaffolded some processes that will help carry those families that were lagging before along with us a little more than we had in the past. I know for many of the families that I have worked with, you know, they have kind of shaken their heads a little bit at what's so different and went, you know, I don't know, my needs weren't met before this and they're not met now. And so actually, not that much is different, except I can't send my kids out of the house every day and to get a little space from them. But many, much of what they are navigating has remained relatively constant for them with the, maybe the added challenge that there are now more people competing for a finite pool of resources than there were before. But the pool of resources has gotten proportionately bigger because the people that have been affected are, I think, maybe more compelling of an audience. And so the contribution and the support has increased as well. So that's my hope out of this process, that we find a way that we can continue to make strategic investments in basic needs. And when the ground stabilizes a little bit underneath us. I became a donor this year in large part because as we were looking around at programs that were targeting basic needs, you know, there weren't a lot of them that were literally going to put money into people's hands. And you had a program that would do that. And I want to applaud that program. I want to say that unfortunately, programs that actually give people money are still very novel in anti-poverty approaches. I don't really understand that, but they are. But here we had an example of people literally being able to engage the foundation and get money to allocate toward needs that they had. And that's to be applauded because it is not something that we allow poor people to do very often, to have money to spend on the things that they need. And you did that. And so I just really want to, just want to call that out as both unique and extremely valuable as an intervention to support our families. So that's all I will say now. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's such a good point and reminder about the continued scaffolding and the fact that so many folks, this is not all that different for them logically. I think up next would be Louie.
Thank you, Becca. And I was actually going to say something similar to Therese in that, like, I'm thinking beyond the pandemic too, like that there's going to be families that are relying on some of these services at this point. And so like, how can you partner with other community partners as well on helping continue some of those needs being met? Because as already been stated, these are not new for many people. And they'll continue on beyond that. And one of the hard things when you're used to receiving help for a little bit and all of a sudden it's gone too, that also has a huge impact. And so I think about that as well. And also just echoing the appreciation for all the care and support that's been given. It's been amazing to see. I did want to also like point out the racial equity work part of it as being something I don't think you see everywhere as being part of the work and where things are going and understanding that there are those overlaps that are impacted by people's identities. I think it's super important, especially when it comes to racial identities and opportunities and access to things. One thing I did want to just leave as a point of maybe something to think about is how the term BIPOC has been used recently in making sure that people understand when you say black and indigenous in there, that there should be some very specific things that meet the needs of both black and indigenous peoples and communities, because that's part of why it's called out. And so it's not just like to say, like, this is a terminology being used, like, those are very specific needs. So I would be a little bit curious about what those specific leadership pathways for black and indigenous staff are, since they're called out in there and very specifically. And so that's a comment to think about the use of BIPOC.
Great, thank you. And we're definitely led by our district leaders on that in terms of what they're developing.
I'm glad Lou and somebody expressed the sentiment that I was already going to say, but I just wanted to, I've been hearing some families who've been receiving some of the services from the foundation in collaboration with school districts. The sense I'm getting from families is that bringing the draft and wraparound services, I think will continue for quite some time. So I'm thinking we're looking at long term. A lot of families are not able to go after work and losing housing. So I just feel that we need to keep that on our radar that this is going to be a long term project in collaboration with the district and the foundation. And so these families can continue to do with the interviews to be able to continue the kiddo's education. And like Lou said, about looking at how we could support the most marginalized populations of our families in our district. And I just wanted to thank you again for all your hard work.
Thank you. Well, I think we, at this point, we were going to turn it back to Sammy to facilitate more discussion focused on resumption and what the school board sees that we, you know, I don't know where we're focusing. I know we already started that as well. So I'll just turn it over to Sammy, though.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for fellow board members. This is a great presentation and I don't want to repeat what everybody said. So I'm going to start with those questions in mind. And also you will see some of the questions you might have answered or discussed. So I will share with us the questions in mind in a second. So they are briefly, what are, let me see if I can get the, there you go. So the first question is, what gaps and opportunities do we need to consider as we think about resumptions of schools and our buildings? And the second question would be, are there additional considerations we need to bear in mind for specific groups and students? And the third one would be, what resources do we need to address these needs? So with that, I want to say, feel free to go back and forth with the questions that you have. Let me see, I'm not sure if the questions are showing, are they?
No, they came down.
Okay.
So I'm wondering, can I chime in just a minute?
Absolutely.
Can y'all hear me? Okay. Okay. So I think that this is an opportunity for us to think about what you've heard from the foundation thus far, about the work that's happened, both in recognizing some of our staff members and the excellence they bring to the craft, as well as the adaption and the ability of the foundation to make some quick shifts and pivot to meet the needs of families and also helping us to continue to grow as an organization. So I think that it's a really great setup for the questions about recognizing that there will be a period of resumption at some point in the future. And what does that look like? I think Sarah posed that question sort of right off the bat. I've been thinking about, and this is one of those pieces I'm wondering. And so we wanted to have a conversation for the board, but also for the foundation, to understand what the hopes are of the school board so that there continues to be alignment between the two organizations. And so we felt like having a couple of questions to help us to really think through that would be really valuable because it would help to inform, actually, all three groups. It helps inform the district, the board, and the foundation as we continue our work with one another. So would you mind like just doing one question and then we can have a few minutes and then go to the next one?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So with that, let's talk to the first question. What gaps and opportunities do we need to consider as we think about resumptions of school in our buildings? And until I wait for the hands to be raised, I'll bring my perspective, which is, I believe one thing is very valuable as an opportunity in this challenge that we're going through is a possible opportunity to discover this new systems that we need to create and or maybe we have created that will stay down the road. So when the pandemic is over, the question would be, is there any systems that we have created right now that could be sustained beyond the pandemic to respond to our students' specific needs? There might have been some opportunities instructional and technological that we did not imagine before. And really thinking about the sustainability of those programs or systems is something that's important on my mind as an opportunity. And with that, I think Sarah, you had your hands up.
Yeah, I, when I ever, and this is sort of one of those issues that's too big, probably for the foundation to take on on their own, but maybe a way to work with the broader community. Daycare is my constant worry. You know, I think as we go back to school, there may be parents who, if they are able to, if they haven't been working and their kids are home, and then their kids are going to go to school two days a week and they're trying to get back into the workforce, but the nature of their work requires a schedule that doesn't work with a hybrid system. We've got a whole nother sort of layer of the issues with daycare. And, you know, thinking about like with older kids, it may not be a physical place that you need kids to go, but a system of people who can be checking in with those kids and working with them on the days that they're home, when they no longer have a parent who's at home kind of paying attention to whether they're logging in or not. Of course, all this depends on whether jobs come back and people are able to return to work. But I feel like every time we change how we're doing something during this pandemic, whether it's shutting down schools, going halftime, it involves all these big adjustments that families are going to have to make. And I don't know how we can work with the school district, with the foundation, and really it needs to be the broader community to allow people to have some support for their kids so that if they are able to return to work, they can.
Thank you. Therese?
Thanks, Sammy. So I've been thinking about the families in our community that are medically vulnerable and for whom a return to in-person education brings a different set of concerns for them, not just for the children, because I think that it makes sense as a school district to think about the children, the medically fragile children that are going to be in our buildings and our obligation to educate them. But I think about the opportunity we have to treat our children as members of a family system for whom the issues of medical vulnerability that are important to them may go beyond the child, but for whom the child is a, you know, is a part of the family system. And so what ways can we be supporting and actively thinking about those needs that are not directly the child, but for whom if the need goes unmet, may prevent the child from being able to engage in the kind of learning opportunities that a hybrid or eventual return to in-person in any form could mean? So, you know, I think it's an idea that I'm contemplating. It's not something I have a suggestion for how we do that, just an awareness that, you know, really thinking about an ecosystem idea of the spaces that we're asking, that we are realizing our families, our children can cross between and how, you know, that's going to bring those little ecosystems together in ways that we need to be preparing for in order to give, you know, those children and those families the best ability to succeed and still take advantage of the public education that needs to be available to them. So yeah, that's just something I've been contemplating.
Thank you, Therese. Vince?
Well, the two directors that went before me really stole my thunder because, I mean, they have really addressed what I was thinking. You know, we know that this pandemic, that comprehensive distance learning is a stratifying factor for students. And so we just have to be really conscious of that. We are already pretty darn good at meeting the needs of a wide array of kiddos. It's just we need to understand that we're going to have to be even better because when kids come back, they're going to have a wide variety of needs. I mean, Jay, you know, mentioned academic need. And we know that some kids are navigating the current situation. All right, there's a bunch of kids that aren't. And so they're going to, you know, the disparity is going to be even broader now after the pandemic. But there's also going to be behavioral and social needs. You know, Therese, you know, you're exactly right. I think that there are factors, it's not necessarily going to be the kiddo that may need the help. It may be the family as well, because there are people that are really struggling right now with the current situation. So I think we just need to be even more aware of the disparities out there and be ready to respond when we move into face-to-face instruction.
Absolutely. Thank you. Jane?
I just want to build on Vince's comment about stratifying because it's the kid who doesn't keep up with grade level math, science, or English, or whatever, but is kept up at the grade level because those are his friends or her friends. And the impact, and that's going to be, I guess, the thing that my heart is positive is is that Ryan and his team are really good listeners for where are the problems and where to spend it. And so I start again with Therese and Sarah's comment, you got to take care of those basic needs, babysitting, et cetera, et cetera. Perfect. You're right. And then, oh my, you've got to stop and listen and think new ways to help, whether it's much more than tutoring, but how to help kids sort of my opinion, how to help kids do a better job and catch. Thank you, Vince.
Thank you, Jay. Lou?
Yeah, I was thinking too, in addition to like the whole support that's already been mentioned, is additional mental health support on top of like what's already there. I know like it's stretched pretty thin. And thinking about how like kids are wanting to go back and see their friends, like they really want that social interaction. But also that can be very overwhelming when you've been at home for months without a large group of people in that same structure in place where it's like go to class, this class, like how fast paced everything is in school and it being a little bit more relaxed and slow paced for many kids, maybe not all, but knowing that there is going to be that shift too, that impact of going back to in-person, even if it's only a couple of days a week, can be, can cause quite a bit of emotion and adjustment for students. So I think about the mental health support beyond what's already in place and also knowing that, like I said, it's stretched pretty thin. So how can we amplify that a little bit? And also not just the tutors, but like making sure that students are being able, I don't know how much the pandemic is going to bring up students that need to be tested for different types of accommodations as well that may have not been known about before. And so if there's ways to help address those needs as well.
Thank you, Lou. Mike?
Yeah, I find this whole conversation very enlightening. And I think that's the real value of this kind of effort to collaborate that has occurred over the last couple of years. And I really appreciate that because And I really appreciate that because your insights, because of the incredible number of hours and experience that exists on that school board really are really important. There are things that personally, I don't see all of those things as well. And so I appreciate that. Going to what Jay had alluded to earlier is I found interesting because he and I are the same generation. And when a lot of those things, as Jay, as you said, were kind of covered and we had expectations, our parents had expectations, we pay our taxes and those things are taken care of, right? I think that one of the, the obstacles we will have is educating people with respect to our potential donors, with respect to, no, some of these things are not covered. That, that bond measure didn't protect this family. A lot of those kinds of things I think are, are going to be something that, that we're going to have to educate our, our potential donors on. And last quick comment would be that we also, among all, you know, every one of you knows better than I how difficult that will be, which re emphasizes the importance of prioritization, which is the difficult part, because I think we are all going to have some very difficult decisions to make. Because when I head out to that donor, we need to get, we need to cover those baseline things that are so important in kind of the hierarchy of needs, right? And, and we're going to need to cover those so people have a base to stand on. And there are going to be some difficult decisions. I want, personally, I want to hear every possible thing that is needed. But then we're going to have to work together with your experience and knowledge to decide which things we can do and which things we may have to wait on a little bit, unfortunately.
Yeah, thank you. Sarah?
Yeah, I, Lou brought up the testing and finding those kids who have the need for accommodations that we're not, not, not seeing right now as we're online and not within my class. I would add to that, that with, you know, finding those kids and finding the needs that they have, it's going to be a high need for what those accommodations are and the specialized, you're teaching of the, the, you know, good, you text to, or speech to text, or good, you know, whatever accommodations that they need. And so there's an expense there. And, um, you know, I can tell you as a parent, I have seen that you're getting those, those resources can be quite expensive. And so it's not something that's accessible to all of our families. And it's a huge equity problem because, you know, my kid is lucky enough to have parents who can afford tutoring, but not everybody can afford your specialized tutoring and having access to that, especially as kids may be falling far, farther behind because they have learning differences that we're not seeing as they're learning online. That's going to be a really critical group of students to make sure we can serve and, and catch up.
Thank you. Ed?
I thank, thank you very much, Sammy. First of all, I just wanted to comment, being back in the room with, with all the people. But I, I am, I'm really not surprised and, and yet I'm amazed at the thoughtfulness and the, the forward thinking that, that, that the board and others are demonstrating. So much more than when I was on the board, which makes me look at myself as a, as a member previously. But let me tell you, it's, it's very, very heartwarming to hear the, the thoughts coming out of, you know, the likes of Therese and Sarah and Jay and, and Sammy and Vince, just, just like remember. And, and the ones who I hadn't met, Luhui and Tina, some really fantastic ideas. We, you know, we have major events coming up. We've got, you know, hands across, across Corvallis. We have campaigns where, where we are raising money to, to put on the programs that you just saw. I mean, those, that, those are big chunks of, of money that came from our Corvallis community. And they come from stories and they come from concrete ideas that originate in this kind of conversation. I love nothing more than to walk away. I see Leave and Becca and Mike and others furiously writing down these ideas. That we are not as a district and as a foundation, as a school board, we're not going to emerge on the other side looking the same. And, you know, when I hear Sarah say, you know, what it's going to look like, when I hear others agree. We, we have been in a, in a reactive mode. Every time we try to get proactive, we slide back to reactivity because everything is different. Everything has changed. What I'm seeing now is I'm seeing the lens of, of trying to anticipate. And that's what this board and this group needs to do. What do we anticipate? And we're looking at the most vulnerable people in our district. I love the concrete ideas. I look at this with a couple of lenses in mind. What does the outcome look like and how do we measure that? And, and how do we have those conversations with donors? So thank you for the floor, Mr. Chair, and I will, and yield it back to you.
Thank you, Ed. Really great thoughts. I, I want to.
Hey, Sammy, Sadie too.
Sadie, yeah. So before I go to you, Sadie, I want to just highlight the last things, two things you said. What does the outcomes look like? And how are we going to have the conversations with the donors? I want to highlight these questions because maybe we won't have clear answers for them today or tonight. But I think they are really good compass questions for us. Thank you. Sadie?
Hi there, everyone. Thank you so much to the board for having us. I really appreciate your time and I miss you guys all so much. I miss all your faces. Um, just as everybody else had said, thank you to both boards for everything that you've done. And I just wanted to give a couple of quick words of encouragement. I, I thank you for everything that you've done for our students so far. And I want to thank you for being here to support our students in the future. It's kind of a really tough job right now. And some of us are stepping into a world of helping students and it's a tough time. So I thank you all for being here for those students. Quick note on the opportunities and gaps question. I think that our system is at a very good opportunity to be rebuilt. I think it's an old system that is meant to work the same way continuously for forever. And I think this is a time that now things are going to change every day. And we don't have a system for that. I think it's time to possibly scrap some of it and start again. And I think it's time to reach kids on a more individual level. We've talked about how parents and families are also going to affect kids getting to school and things like that. Those have already been problems. They've always been problems, but now they're in front of us. And I think that we can have a lot more individual, individual communication since we're already reaching students in their homes now instead of just only seeing them at school. So I think this is a really good opportunity to give kids a more individual and personalized education rather than the broad group that we just kind of push everybody into. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Sadie. And I'm not seeing any virtual or camera hands up, so I'm going to say, oh, Lou, go for it.
Sorry, thanks, Sammy. I was trying to find the button, but thanks for that, Sadie. That was like super awesome, thinking about like, where are the opportunities to reimagine things? That's like, I really love that kind of thinking of like, where can we make changes with? What are the barriers and how can we change them? And one of the things that Ed brought up that I wanted just to mention briefly on about like, how do we tell this story? I really hope we can think about how to tell this story without it having to rely on people reliving their traumas. And so without that ask, if that makes sense. And so like, that happens a lot when there's an ask, like, well, have people tell their stories and that will help convince. But like, how can we invite that space that people want to share, but not rely on it, if that makes sense?
Yeah, absolutely. And I've been hearing that also from another nonprofits I'm involved with where they emphasize on that there is an emotional burden on the individual who's making the ask if they are the recipients or the someone who's navigating the challenges in front of the donors. So it's definitely something to be mindful of. And maybe that's to the question of how we have those conversations with the donors. Personally, I wonder how would I have it differently without putting face on the name? If, if that will create trauma for that face, for the story that we tell. So thank you. Thank you, Lou. I want to move to the next question. I know we're running a little bit over time, but I think we're going to entertain.
Do you think we should do the second, number two and number three together?
Yeah.
As a combination?
Exactly. So I'm thinking like, well, let's give it five to six minutes. Questions number two on number three. And as I share them, I do have an answer for number two that I think speaks to what just Lou and Sadie said. So number two is, are there additional considerations we need to bear in mind for specific groups of students? Number three, what resources do we need to address these needs? So feel free to speak to anyone or both of them interchangeably. And I want to highlight something from this conversation that really spoke to me from the last two speakers or few speakers, which is one of the opportunities that we need to really realize right now that every student is unique and they need an individualized learning program. I don't want to say an IDP necessarily that is specified, specific for our students with disabilities or who needs individual learning experience in the former years because the system did not work for them. I'm thinking of a system where there is an IDP for every single student, whether they have a disability or not, whether they have a learning style that is common or not. So basically the idea is to really have every student lead the way for their learning journey. And we help them with the resources that they need. And we really ditched the idea that the classroom, everybody learned the same thing, the same time and same location all the time. And those assumptions has been tested through the pandemic. And we're trying to deliver that unique learning opportunities already. And as we navigate through the pandemic and beyond, I think we need to be very mindful. How could we create individualized learning opportunities for the students? That's, that's really deliver the premise of learning, which is every student grow, graduate and be the best of themselves. So with that, I'll leave it up to anyone who wants to speak for the second and third question. Are there additional considerations we need to bear in mind for specific groups of students? And what resources do we need to address these needs? Let's give it maybe five or six minutes.
So, so there's a couple of things that I've heard in the other lists that I think fit potentially with number two and number three. The component about enhanced mental health supports was one of those that is for students who are having some challenges as a result of what's gone on. And then also the sort of the screening and individualized support. Those were a couple that I heard in the first section that I think fit into number two. And then under number three around resources, resources aren't just financial, but I think there's a component of prioritization. And a, and that concept of the conversation I have with the donor. And so I don't think those are necessarily financial resources, but it's a prioritization that helps us to align resource. So those are some of the things I sort of took from question one and put into question two and question three.
Wonderful, wonderful. Tina and then Jay and then Vince and then Lou. Tina?
Yeah, so mental health, what Ryan was talking about has been on the forefront of the district. In court, I think needs to be bolstered over this last year and continuing on. We have common high kiddos coming back to the classes eventually. And they're not going to be able to receive the academics that they need if that's not addressed. And then we also need to think about long-term mental health awareness around what a burden it is to have our kiddos come back into school if school is so different. Having to take precautions, are these kiddos heading home to medically needed family members? What kind of burden are they holding in a mental health capacity? So like, I have to go here for school, but I'm afraid to go home and bring home COVID to my family members. So I think long-term bolstering our mental health is in person. And not only that, we need to look at the mental health support. And like, how do we support our teachers and staff as they come back into the classroom? And I just feel that's just a key component as well as the wraparound services. And I know it's a big ask, but I just think that without these, the academic piece won't come as clearly as you would like when we're already looking at maybe possibly tutors.
Thank you, Tina. Jane?
Sammy and I had a conversation this afternoon about the, the concept of, of some students not accessing advanced or even college because that's not in their maybe background or cultural expectation or mom and dad expectation. And so, though it's, it's kind of out of the corner of my eye, it's not about pandemic, but it is about a, a special group of kids that I think we're thinking about now. And, and my encouragement there would be to build on the Avid program. I know that's there, but also are there other ways that we can encourage, inspire both the students and the teachers to build up some of those students who don't see themselves as a musician or a boy shoe student or a Lynn Betton student? How do I help with, with the summer program or a visit to the schools or more avid? I, I'm just out of the corner of my eye. It's one of those things that, that hits me and I think maybe it's, it needs to be looked at.
Thank you, Jay. Vince?
Thank you for the time. So the first question is about groups and specific groups. I want to come back to parents because the school has kiddos for what? Six hours, six to eight hours a day. The rest of the time kiddos are with their parents. So we need to think of parents as a way to, as a way to support student outcomes. And that can be behavioral, it can be around educational supports. And like Sadie said, we can rethink the way that we access parents. We can be much more nimble with accessing through virtual platforms like, like Zoom. And then the, the second question is about resources. And so we have two boards in a joint meeting. And every decision-making boy, they're limiting resources time, time together. And so, and here again, I'm trying to recall when these two boards met together last. I think it's been too long. And I'm reminded of the three Cs of, of collaboration, which is celebrate, calibrate and correct. And we're doing, you know, we got to celebrate the success of the foundation and the great work that's been happening. And we're doing some calibration right now and, and getting realigned. And I think that we need to be more intentional about, about spending more time and having the attention of our boards pointed at each other so that we can be better collaborators.
Thanks, Vince. Lou?
Yeah, I was thinking about resources and I don't know if we're like just totally grabbing a bunch of different things and bringing them into the conversation at this point. But, and also thinking about specific groups. And I know I've brought this up, I don't know how many times at this point since I've been part of the district on, on the Indian Education Program as a source of funding to meet the needs of indigenous students that's federally funded and allocating some time to doing the data research that's needed to apply for that grant. So perhaps that could be a way to meet some of those needs that are missing. Whereas it's that cultural responsiveness, the absolute need of the teachers that I hear about all the time through my professional work of needing people to go to classrooms to help explain indigenous cultures. That's all part of that program. So I think about that program heavily as far as like a resource that also meets the need of a specific group.
Thank you. Therese?
Thanks, Sammy. So I'm, I'm hoping that I'm not repeating anything or not. Well, anyway, I had to let the dog out so that I could even have the sound on because he is, because he's my dog. And so, uh, so I wanted to revisit, I think Jay was talking about college readiness. Yes, is that, so the subject has come up? Okay, so I've just been thinking about the, the kids for whom this season has really impacted their college preparedness. I don't just mean on-time graduation, for which that has also been a factor, but I mean the participation in the events and activities that directly lead to awareness about college and enrollment and. and participation in activities that directly lead to scholarships and things that are now potentially impacting the, the opportunity for, for college. And so I'm, I'm just thinking about those, that group of students and thinking about the number of those students that disproportionately come from the populations that have other challenges already for getting into college, who now have this added, this added hurdle. So I, I don't have a, I have no suggestions at all. I have an awareness that in the families I'm working with, there are a lot of parents who have juniors, seniors in high school right now, who the parents themselves, they don't feel equipped. They did not go to college. They want to support their children, but they are, they don't have, they don't feel they have the resources to directly support them. So some kind of central place where those parents and those children can come together to get the kind of intentional guidance that would probably maybe be happening if they were sitting in a classroom and a guidance counselor had eyes on them, but might not be happening now. Have we called out, reached out to those families and asked them, how's, what are you thinking about for school? Oh, the application deadlines are like coming for a lot of schools, like soon. And so what's our engagement to be intentionally calling out to those, to those students and making sure that we don't have kids not setting foot on campus because they didn't have a, they didn't have a desk to stop by in the guidance office to just quickly ask? And they didn't have anybody stop them in the hallway at lunch and say, hey, have you thought about applying for? And putting that in front of them because they're not in front of anybody right now.
Thank you very much, Therese. I think this is really, I, I, I have a, I have a light bulb coming from my brain. I'm not sure if this is the unique, but from what you mentioned, I think this is a discussion we should have. And it's an opportunity to mention it's here since I know some of our trustees have a couple of paths that's, that's overlapped there. The discussion we're having right now is something that we need to involve more stakeholders to do some problem solving around college readiness. Waiving the SAT and ACT is great, but it's not going to eliminate the equity gap automatically. The equity gap will shift somewhere else to someone who knows how to take the right classes, to build the right resume. And maybe that equity cap will be further exacerbated. So I would, I wonder what conversation we could have, school district, school board, the foundation and also OSU foundation and LB potentially to really have that discussion around readiness and also OSU admissions and maybe regional colleges as well. How can we be sure that we prepare our students in, in K through 12 and really wave the hurdles in front of them? So that's just an idea in my mind that we need to have that conversation probably on a larger table as well. Sadie and then Becca?
Hello again. Um, I had a thought regarding some things that Therese said. It was, she had said about reaching out to families to make sure, you know, are your kiddos okay? Are you okay and such? But also on another note, we can't always rely on parents to get us the information that we need to. I know that I was a very independent child and my parents did not talk to the school almost at all. And usually it was on a, on a student level that, that I needed to connect with a student or a teacher or whatnot. And that is really tricky during COVID because you need to make phone calls, you need to make Zoom calls. And also at the same time, those lines need to, monitored is the best word that I have. Because in a, in a school setting, you can make sure that teachers and other students are talking appropriately to your student. When there is no monitoring at all, there's a lot of room for error. And I think that, I think that I lost my thought and that's all I have to say.
And we'll be around if it comes back to you. Becca?
Oh, just to pick up briefly on what you mentioned Sammy, in terms of the other stakeholders, that'll be important to get into the discussion. OSU actually right now at its most recent governing board, Board of Trustees, spent a lot of time focused on our, that we need to step up in terms of the pre-K through PhD, the entire pipeline in terms of how do we help the state? We are a system of education, so it's not K through 12 versus higher ed. We've got to be a coordinated system. And you know, how can OSU as the statewide institution really lead in that effort, given all of our age and all of that across the state? So I think having OSU right here is going to be a great partner for that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. And I want to quote President Alexander saying, you start the discussion around a graduation rate for college at kindergarten and that's absolutely true. And I really appreciate that OSU really having that discussion and that thinking. I do have Vince?
Ed was seeking recognition. Sammy.
I didn't see you, Ed. So Ed and then Vince, and then we're going to move to the next point.
Thank you very much Vince. I appreciate that Sammy. I just wanted to pick up and go a bit further into a group that we, we don't often discuss. And I've been paying attention to what we've been talking about over the past couple of years, but I remember having conversations about the talented and gifted group, which really comes up because it's on the other end of the spectrum. But this is a group that's been significantly impacted. And we, we have, we have very, very close, we're closely following the, the affair of our own son, who's a senior trying to apply for college and all of his friends. This is a group of kids who are trying to get into colleges. They've had their activities taken away. They've had their sports taken away. My son has had seven SATs and ACTs canceled. He has not been able to take a test. And half of the country, depending upon what color is your state, is taking these tests. Even though schools are saying that there is, that, that you're not going to be disadvantaged, our kids are going to be disadvantaged because, you know, because of the way the situation is, they don't have grades. They don't have scores. They don't have activities. So, and, and they're going to be that much more anxious coming out of this pandemic, going into potentially, you know, competitive schools if they can get in. So I wanted to touch again on what LaHui said, which is Luke said that we need to invest in mental health, which again, remembering both ends of the spectrum. But also, you know, can the board, can the district, can the foundation be creative about how to help those kids who have not been able to do the kinds of activities that they do that would help them to be competitive, that would help them, whether it's volunteering or working with the school, you know, AV. All that stuff is, has, has really dried up and their orchestra is gone. I mean, everything is, is taken away and we don't talk about them very much. So wanted to put that out there for us to remember that group too.
Thank you, Ed. I really appreciate it.
And we, and we do have an SAT coming up on December 10th. So that is the plan.
Yeah, it's, it's too, it's too late. Thanks.
Yeah.
And snow or shine, you're not gonna cancel it. Well, with that, I want to say thank you, everybody. I think this has been really a great discussion and should be continued. With that, I want to hand it over to Ryan and Leaf to really facilitate the discussion around topics for our meeting in the spring.
Yeah, and this actually aligns with what we heard from Vince earlier, just about the, the three Cs. And so the continuity piece for us here. So last year we met in December for a single meeting and it was really, the whole meeting was the work between the foundation and the school district. And then what we decided was that it made more sense to have a couple of meetings where it was one of a couple topics, topics on the agenda, so it could happen more frequently. And so we do have a second meeting planned for later this year. And so what Leaf and I were hoping to hear from you was sort of an assessment of the conversation tonight, as well as what are some topics that you want to make sure that we, we cover next? And so that's where, where we're at right now. And so again, wanting to hear from all of you. One, this, this was helpful information. This was a good agenda for us. And secondly, these are things we want to make sure that we talk about in the near future.
And if I could just add on to that, Ryan, that was perfect. And I want to underscore for us the importance of these conversations. I really think that it's because of these thoughtful conversations over the past few years that we've been able to move our work forward as a foundation. And these incredible community members who have stepped up to spend vast numbers of volunteer hours and for the benefit of students in our schools are really what's making the difference. So thank you so much to both the school board and the foundation trustees for moving these conversations forward.
Thank you, Leaf. So by raise a virtual hand, and I think I see all on one screen, so, or camera hand. Let me see if there's anyone who has any answers to that question or the prompts. Don't see any. Oh, I see one.
Actually, no, I'm, so I do have an outstanding question that I didn't get answered earlier. And I don't need an answer tonight, but maybe it's a topic that we can get an answer in the coming months, particularly up towards February 4th. But it's, our last conversation in this conversation is felt one-sided. I've heard a lot of school board members speaking and I just, I want to know how the school board can support the foundation better? How can we be better partners in this relationship? And I, I just don't want this to be one-sided. This was, has been a wonderful conversation. We have heard from you. But yeah, if, yeah, how can us as board members, as a board, as a unified body, support you better? And how as individual board members, how can we better, be better partners with the foundation?
And I, I think that's so wonderful and I love the idea of, I think the foundation will, you know, take that and have really good specific feedback. My initial response that for myself is right now for me, hearing you all talk is what is the most important to guarantee alignment that what we're supporting on, on behalf of the school district and on board is, is where you want us to be. And so that may sound kind of, it may feel a little one-sided from the, the school side. That's, that's what we're clamoring for. We don't live in the world you guys are living in. So we want to make sure that we're being strategic and making impact with where, you know, the resources are going. And I do think there's a lot of good thought that can be put into what specifically could each director, each board member do? What could the board itself do? You know, already we're seeing a lot from the district, even, you know, Ryan's emails to out to all the parents. There's more actually recognition of the foundation in specific ways. So that raises the minds of donors, oh, there's this foundation. I'm sure Leaf and others have a lot of other ideas, but right now this feedback is what I'm needing.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wants to add to the answer? Mike or anyone else?
No, well, I was, I was gonna say exactly, less eloquently, but exactly what Becca said. And I, and I really believe that Vince, because, and this came up last meeting as well. I do remember this part of the discussion and it's, and it was the same thought is that really, I think that we are really trying to, to some degree, do what you want us to do. And that's why we have to listen a lot. And I think that if we don't understand what you're asking, that's when you're going to get our input. At this point, I think that some of the research that's going to occur, some of the deeper dive into what these families are needing as they, as they start to come back. Or if we don't, then as, as you get that input, I would say, don't wait for the next meeting, but find a way to communicate to us through Sammy or through Ryan so that we get that input quickly and, and, and as specifically as you can give it. Because I do agree with exactly what, what Becca said is that we're, we're kind of the foot soldier in a sense to try to help you carry out. We have a mission, but it's really a lot of us helping you carry out your vision. And so we need to hear it and frequently.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for that feedback, Becca and Mike.
Mike, you had something to add before Vince or that's it?
That was exactly it. As, as I was going to say what Becca said exactly, actually.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Well, in, in that case, I think it helps us and, and also for you to know that we continue to meet monthly. Sammy and I meet with the foundation at their monthly meetings. So from the board perspective, if there's other ideas that come up and from the foundation, if there's ideas and suggestions you have as well, as we plan for our, our spring meeting to fill, feel free to bring those ideas to us as we continue to work to build the, the connection between the two organizations, thinking about the students of Corolla. So I want to thank you all as foundation members for your unwavering support and everything from the golden apple to caring for our community and our families over the last six months. It's really, we're fortunate to have, to have the support. So again, thank you for being here tonight and thanks for all you do to, to help our kids.
Thank you so much for having us, everyone. Really appreciate the opportunity, very inspiring and encouraging.
Absolutely. Jay, is there one brief thing you want to say before we move to the next?
I just want to say thank you to Sadie as a, a younger joining member. I appreciate you a lot. And for the record, Mike, she is a lot closer to 69 than I am. And Ed's gray hair, he's really not that old. So just to clarify.
All right. Well, with that, we're really, we're really proud of this work. And yes, it's great to see you back Sadie and Ed and the boardroom, the virtual boardroom. And I really appreciate all of your time, all, and this discussion has been very helpful and fruitful. I want to reiterate what Ryan said, we'll continue the lines of communication. And we're very grateful for the support of the foundation and the donors who are supporting the foundation. It's phenomenal seeing the numbers and the types of things that you're doing. You're, you're saving lives and you're giving opportunity by their day and navigates a really challenging time. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your work. And if anyone is listening, please donate to the foundation and support the foundation by any way possible because they're making a huge difference in our community. All right, with that, thank you all. Feel free to stick around, but we will be moving to other business. I feel free to tune into it and I would like to wish you a really wonderful evening. Take care. All right, next point to the agenda would be, I want to just check in with everybody. If you need five minutes of break or you're okay with going with the next item on the agenda, which will take somewhere around maybe how long, 15 minutes?
Yeah, 15 or 20.
15 or 20 minutes. So if I don't hear a break, we will go for the next item of the agenda.
A break would be great.
All right, let's do a break for five minutes and we'll be back. So we'll be returning at 8:06 and we are adjourned. Not adjourned, we are in recess. That was a close one.
We are in recess.
We are reconvening from the recess. Welcome back, everybody. And the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's comprehensive distance learning update. So Ryan, what's going on with distance learning?
All right.
Every meeting I've got to do it once. Sorry about that. So we wanted to come back to you and this is sort of like the August update. So when we met with you in August, we did an initial presentation about our rapid development teams and the work that had been happening since the beginning of June. And so this is the same group representing those same areas and just providing you with an update on those things that have happened or things that are still to come as we continue to move through the, the school year, maintaining right now in our remote learning educational options. So Lindsay's going to move through the slides and each one of our team members will have an opportunity to provide a couple of key points about the work that's been happening and also an opportunity for, for questions you may have as a board or questions you may be hearing. So Lindsay, do you want to go to the next slide, please? So when we met with our teachers not too long ago, I shared a, or staff not too long ago, I shared a Friends video where they were trying to get a mat, a couch up a flight of stairs and around a corner. And Chandler keeps yelling pivot, pivot, and it doesn't really work that way. So that's really in essence, what we've been trying to do. We've been doing a lot of pivoting. I think our pivoting has been more successful than the not to video we watched from Friends. I think we have done a really remarkable job of pivoting and continuing to be adaptable as we've moved through this pandemic with changes in terms of rules and changes in terms of number of cases in our community and all the things that that entails. So our, I would say that we are in the middle of a marathon and we're really tired. At the same time, we are continuing to work hard to continue to move this forward in such a way that we're supporting our kids and our, our families. So there's that piece. And then also just that Dr. Fauci quote, we need to hunker down and get through this fall and winter because it's not going to be easy. Again, I think the other thing we've tried to do is maintain expectations for family members and communicate early, recognizing that we have a ways to go. Go ahead and go to the next slide. And then this is just a reminder of those goal areas that we developed at our last meeting around this school year and COVID. So those strategies, just as a reminder and as, as something to, to ground us in implementing the operational blueprint, operational blueprint aligned with current educational delivery model. So recognizing where we're at right now in comprehensive distance learning, but also thinking about things like limited in person and when we can bring kids back in cohorts. So that blueprint will continue to change as our model changes, but also making sure that we're following the guidance from the state. Support the work and recommendations of the CSC rapid development teams. Again, this is the opportunity to hear from those team leads tonight. Provide ongoing communication with staff, students and the community. This is a great forum to do that as this is a, a live YouTube. So folks can watch to see what we're working on. And at the same time, continuing to communicate early with families so they can anticipate changes as they come. Utilizing new resources in ways that prioritize health and safety in line with the district's instructional priorities. Olivia will talk a little bit about that. And then also identifying and support areas of system development, which support resumption in the next normal. And that's the conversation we just had with the foundation. So as we come back in the future, what's that going to look like? What will our students need? What will our families need? And I want to just, just again, say thank you for the insights that you shared. Because of what it shows me is that you're also up at night thinking about it and trying to figure out what makes the most sense for our community. Those things weren't hard for you to come up with. They were right there because you've been thinking about them a lot and that was really evident. So, so again, that's another component of our work together between the, the board and staff. Next slide. So this is just sort of the, the review of dates thus far. So in July, on the 31st, we notified the community about our first postponement, postponement of in-person learning. First day of school, September 9th. A couple of days before that, one of the things that still stands out to me is the opportunity for kids to, and founders to come through and pick up school supplies. And when I think about that, that's actually still one of the best days of the school year. And it's one of the best days of the school year because we were able to see, see students, staff were able to see their kids. And that feeling of, of wearing this together just really played out and resonated. And so as we think about, as we move forward, right now that those are, those are the memories of this that are the most poignant because they're the ones that really matter most for both teachers and for students. October 7th was that continuation of remote learning until January 4th announcement. November 23rd through 27th is the conference dates. December 18th through the 3rd is our winter break. And then also just kind of keeping in mind for our secondary students, February 2nd is the last day of the first semester. So again, as you think about January 4th and last day of the semester, we've really been making decisions that take us through almost the middle of the school year thus far. Lindsay. All right, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to our rapid development teams to provide a brief update. And I think Sammy, this would probably be, if there's questions related to one of these areas, if you, as board members want to put up your hands, I think it would be better to do that now than maybe a pop-cording at the end.
Sounds good. So any questions right now so far?
All right, Marcy Anne.
All right, I'll get started. Good evening, everybody. Great to see you. I will be talking about the racial equity rapid development team. This team met back in the spring and this group was comprised of 15 to 20 members. Those members included counselors, students from our SAFE group, Delta members, teachers and administrators, the majority of them being members from our Black, Indigenous and people of color and staff of color. So we met in the spring and really what you'll notice tonight is all our different rapid development teams really have a theme and a thread, which is equity. But we wanted to in the spring, spend some time really thinking about how racial equity is going to be part of, of our distance learning. So I wanted to share with you just four points. It was hard to choose because I wanted to share so much, but I wanted to at least highlight some important pieces. And today, when, when I was in a meeting, it just kind of dawned on me, this is week seven. And so I, and it was just hard to believe because it seems like it's much longer, but it's, it's to me, I feel a sense of gratitude and honor to see how much work has happened in these seven short weeks. And I think what you'll hear tonight is all that work. And so I'm excited for you to hear what each group is doing to provide distance learning for our students. The first bullet point, there is lessons for racial equity. And members from our racial equity rapid development team have come together to create lessons for racial equity. And we have looked at the teaching tolerance standards as well as looked at some of the correlation with other standards such as social studies and health. And we have developed a set of lessons that go with each of those domains. And the purpose and vision behind that is to really live our racial equity work. And one of the things that we've heard from our SAFE students and our Delta students is this hope and this ask of wanting our system to not only show, so, so they can see themselves in their teachers, in their administrators and also in their curriculum. And so the first set of lessons were sent out to staff in September. And so far, we've received a positive response and we are excited to continue creating the lessons for diversity, which would be this next set of lessons. Another area for us that we're really excited about is increasing student voice. And the, thanks to the Corvallis Schools Foundation for providing some grant dollars to help us increase SAFE in not only in our secondary area, but also in our elementary. We hope this year to increase the participation of our SAFE students at the elementary level in every school. And again, SAFE is students advocating for equity. And then growing our leaders. This is something that we've been wanting to do. And this is the work that our human resources department, our teaching and learning department are working on to grow and empower our staff and to have more leaders that really represent our students. So we will be working on that this year. And then lastly, growing our Delta community and Delta, another acronym, is District Equity Leadership Team Advisory. And we have five Delta leaders, which you met last, was it last? Yeah, anyways, either last, uh, school board meeting or the one before, I don't remember. But we were able to meet as a Delta collective about a week ago. And we invited and were able to bring in more Delta families. And we have an additional 20 Delta members that have joined our Delta group. And we're excited to continue meeting with them throughout this year. And again, this is, this really goes in line with our pillar of family and community engagement empowerment. And it's also tied to our board goals. So we're just excited to be able to have spaces where our communities can come together with our district staff and work together in true partnership. So that's in a nutshell, what our racial equity rapid development team is working on. And we're excited to, our next step is to work with the educational delivery model rapid development team as well as the social emotional rapid development team. So we're excited to collaborate with them as well throughout this year.
All right, Jennifer. Do you want to go ahead and talk about workforce?
It's always hard to follow Marcy Anne because she has such exciting work that's happening. So mine is more about the details. Workforce, we've been meeting on a very regular basis with our union leaders in discussing working conditions and things that need to be done. We've created a running FAQ for our employees and as new issues or things come up that we want to work through and make sure staff have information, we're keeping that up to date. And then the other thing is a big thing where our goal has been to retain our current staff. Definitely doing school virtually looks very different and individuals' jobs look different. And so we're shifting as we need so we can best serve our students because we have incredible.
Thank you.
And next, health and safety. All right, so I'm, I'm going to, health and safety is a combination of both facilities and the health and safety operational blueprint. So with regard to the first bullet, we have installed health stations at the main entrances of our buildings because families still are coming in. They ring the doorbell if they need to come in and talk to somebody in the office. But those health stations provide hand sanitizer, masks and those types of things for our families. We have a lot of staff, a lot of staff, teaching staff who are choosing to teach from their classrooms, even though we are teaching remotely. And because of that, we're using that as an opportunity to kind of beta test some contact tracing. So the contact tracing is happening via Google Spreadsheets. And you can log in remotely or you can log in as you walk in the door. And we're keeping track of staff who are coming in and working in their classrooms and leaving and anyone else who comes in and out of the building. That's going to be very helpful if we get to the point where, where we are able to bring small groups of students in. We've already been going through this process, so we have an idea of how it works and how it works best. And then the last is the operational blueprint. Honestly, it's the, the day that everyone approved it and we submitted it, like the next day, ODE sent us a new one and a new template. So we kind of have been on hold with updating, but we started the updating process again just this week. And we're including a lot of information. Some of the newest parts of the blueprint include working with students who are dysregulated behavior, those kinds of things. But all of it is definitely something we can get done easily and we are completing that task this week.
All right, any questions for Melissa, Marcy Anne or Jennifer?
Vince, we have, we have Vince, go ahead.
So Melissa, can you go back to the contact tracing? And so one of the things that I'm, one of the questions that I have on this topic of this whole topic is, what is it, what can parents expect as kids get back into schools? So can you, can you discuss what that contact tracing looks like more from a procedural standpoint? So parents can have kind of a window into what, what it'll look like when their, when their kid actually gets to go back and walk back into the building?
When we have students actually coming into a classroom, like on a hybrid schedule, for example, the teacher's going to be responsible for taking that contact tracing information, which students walked in the door. And the, the entrance that they're going to be coming in will be a screening entrance. For a lot of our elementaries, that'll be the outside doors to the classrooms. And at that point, the teacher asks the screening questions of the parents and we'll check that off on the contact tracing box and when the student walked in. And then besides being in the classroom and coming in and out, there's going to be another section for students especially about other places they might've traveled to during the day when they were in the building. So restrooms, if they're going to a special specialist class, actually no, because we were talking about specialists coming into classrooms. So maybe not, but definitely like maybe the library or the restroom, that kind of thing. So we are tracking them coming in and out, their health upon entering and any other place in the building that they visited.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to follow up on that, not necessarily immediate, immediate solution, but I'm wondering if there are any technology based solutions that might be there. And I know one of the things is the iPhone, they had this thing with Androids. But unfortunately, Oregon or OHA still did not activate it, which does contact tracing using Bluetooth anonymously notifies everybody exposed. And I know this is dealing with adults, not necessarily children. So I want to be mindful of that idea of proposing it or expecting it without being mindful of the, that's not every kiddo have their iPad with them as they go to the restroom and cafeteria. So probably what you're doing actually might be much more conducive for the need for contact tracing. But I have a question mark about technology, use of technology for contact tracing. Is this something that we should expect some developments on or are we exploring it?
We have, we've, we've actually sat and listened to a couple of presentations. Jennifer's helped with that as well as Gil in technology. So we've looked at different contact tracing apps and what they can provide us. And we're kind of just holding off until we are getting closer to that place where we see more of our kids coming in the And we're kind of just holding off until we are getting closer to that place where we see more of our kids coming in the building.
Okay. You know, and one of the things we saw early on was that a lot of the examples were made for college-age students to be able to go back and kind of recreate their day and where they went, which won't necessarily work for our elementary-age kids. And so I think some of the, some of the tools out there don't necessarily, aren't necessarily developmentally appropriate for, for where our students are at. So that's, that has been a consideration.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Well, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and not jumping to anything and really taking that into consideration. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
If not, we'll move to the next slide.
All right.
Go ahead, Lindsay. Thank you. So Amy and Nikki will now talk about Ed Delivery.
Hi, everyone. I think I'll go first. I am, I kind of have some spotty Wi-Fi right now, so I'm not turning my camera on, but I'm here. I can still be engaged without my camera on, which is a hot topic for discussion. Seems like we were just here and at the same time, it seems like I was sharing this with you two years ago. Done a lot, like Marcy Ann has said, and we're seven weeks in. So the few things I wanted to address with you were just our team working as a collective and really moving away from individualistic and individualized schools to really a cohesive team. And it, we, when we did this, we developed guidance together, alignment on curriculum, professional learning, and really working on the daily schedule. So every school is aligned, so teachers have resources across all schools that are the same. And so that document is really a kind of go-to for teachers for the entire year. And it continually gets updated as we add new things. The last bullet on my little slide here, assessment and student engagement are definitely two of our next sections that'll be coming into that. I think the other thing that was important for me to talk to you guys about tonight was social emotional learning and how we're weaving that into our everyday, knowing how much trauma our kiddos are facing, knowing what's happening with race around the country and in our town, that it was an important topic that we weren't going to leave out. And so every day, our teachers should be, you know, starting their day with a class meeting and ending with a class meeting. And we've also pushed our whole child specialists who are music, art, counseling, PE, library, teachers to partner with grade levels and really bring a holistic approach to their teaching and because we know some kids thrive with different things. And so having that be a partnership team has really been important. And I would say a, an overall theme for the elementary team is really about inclusion and collaboration. So I think that's good. Nikki, if you want to go from there and then we can see if we have questions?
Sure, I can go. So when Amy and I got together to just talk about like where we were last time that we met with you and where we are now, we revisited our goals that we had developed with teachers, I think back in the spring, actually. And so I think the thing to, to celebrate is like we've gotten to where we are because we have been collaborating with, with teachers and having a lot of their voice. And then as I get into those bullets on the slide, I'll talk a little bit about some of the ways we continue to support our, our staff. So our, our goals were to support teachers in designing engaging lessons, designing lessons to support all learners, facilitating collaborative learning spaces, and then incorporating a variety of formative assessments. So we wrote those goals thinking about remote learning. And then our work is continuing to support teachers in, in, in improvement because this is new to all of us. So one of the things that, that we have done is developed a secondary guidance similar to the K5 document that Amy referenced. And we're trying to get teachers to a place where they're aligned. I think one of the things that teachers have been asking for is some guidance around grading. And in that rapid development team, we had a group that broke off and put together some guidance for grading that's based in equity. And it's really focused on the why and, and why the ways that they, they grade and assess should be different. And that has been a big shift for our teachers. And of course, as Ryan said, our teachers are pivoting constantly. And, and they are working so hard. And I was, I was on my way home this evening and, and saw one of our teachers leaving the building at 5:15 that I know was there at 7:30. So they're putting in long days as we continue to adjust and learn and improve. Probably the biggest thing in secondary that is, has been a challenge and a big lift for our teachers is the implementation of Canvas. And so knowing that was coming, we did professional development in the spring. We've also have four Canvas coaches that are at the Sheldonen, Linus Pauling, Corvallis High School in Crescent Valley that are supporting teachers ongoing learning about Canvas. And that has been like the, the majority of questions that we're getting are about Canvas and Canvas Gradebook and how all of that works. And so each week, our, our coaches are offering sessions to teachers to like continue to support and accelerate their learning. And I'm finding that is kind of coming to this area where teachers have gone, okay, these are the tools that really work for me and I'm going to focus on doing those really well. And so now we're moving into the next kind of segment of learning, which is all about the culturally relevant resources that they can use. So last year, Marcy Ann and I met with you regarding the social studies adoption. And for grades six through twelve, we adopted Newzella for social studies. So we, when we were looking at pricing, we actually decided to, to purchase Newzella as a supplement because it is a great online resource that has relevant materials to students that can be leveled. They're also available in Spanish. And so that's kind of our next direction with staff is saying, hey, here's some resources that are available to you and they're integrated with Canvas. As some of them have still been relying on print. And while we are getting resources out to students, we know that having things that are right at their hands and that are current and relevant are also more engaging for our kids. And that's it from me. We're ready for questions, I think.
Let's go to Corvallis Online as well.
Okay.
And then come back to the curriculum piece, if that's okay? All right, next slide, Lindsay. And so we have Byron and Mark here as the administrators for Corvallis Online. And again, I just want to recognize that these two principals have taken on new responsibilities and we didn't obviously know how many students would go to Corvallis Online. So it has been a pretty significant change in terms of their position and their workload. So kudos to Byron and Mark for, for taking this on. And so giving them a minute just to share some of their learnings and some of the next steps around these two programs.
Hi, I'm, I'm going to pull up the slideshow because I see on here it doesn't have the elementary bullet point, so I want to make sure I have them to look from, from here. So one sec. All right. So for, for elementary wise and Corvallis Online, we are in the thick in, of learning the world of online schooling. And so we're working closely with Florida Virtual School and developing a relationship with them. And so one of the things that we've heard from families and from our staff in the elementary portion of online is the appreciation for the flexibility that is provided with that. And to help with that, our teachers have developed pacing guides and for week, for each week, pacing guides for the quarter and flexible schedules that families can use to help self-pace. At the same time, we're offering Zoom meetings each week for community building and relationship that focuses on social emotional learning and racial equity lessons similar to what's being offered in the hybrid program. We're, we're still working through ongoing training and coaching, both on our racial equity lessons on Canvas and the Florida Virtual School curriculum. And then our real next steps to be focused on are looking at the assessments that we offer and how we're assessing students and then how we're providing differentiation within the online platform.
Thanks, Byron and Mark.
So at the secondary level, the staff and students are getting into a nice routine of learning. While the teachers aren't teaching daily lessons or planning daily lessons, they're doing a great job of assessing student need and responding accordingly. And lately, they've been doing a lot of outreach to students who aren't being as successful as we hoped or just aren't engaging with the, the online material. Next week, we will start our weekly Care and Connect meetings. So we'll have a middle school level meeting and we'll have a high school level meeting. And the teachers have kind of grouped themselves accordingly and they'll plan and run those every week. And then beginning in November, I'll also hold a monthly Q and A with the high school students. I've gotten feedback from them that they'd like to see something like that. So I'll be checking with them every month. The parents that I have talked to, for the most part, are very pleased with Corvallis Online and, and the Apex Curriculum. They love the flexibility. And I've got, I've got mostly really positive feedback about it.
Thank you. And so now, questions around the curriculum area?
Yeah, we do have two questions, one from Jay and then Vince and then Lou, actually three. So Jay?
So first comment is, this is like for years playing baseball and then turning around and now we're going to play football. I mean, it's all parade for all the hard work you're doing. It's amazing. I just have a quick question on the Corvallis Online Secondary. You say four hundred and sixty students, eighteen hundred classes. What does that take for a commitment of staff? How many teachers deliver that?
We've got fifteen teachers, a full-time registrar, and then we're, we're utilizing our athletic secretaries at each high school building for some support as well.
Okay. And those. Who else can ask?
And those teachers, some of them are teaching as many as, well, not really teaching, they're managing as many as ten classes with grades ranging from six all the way up to seniors in high school.
Good. Jay, do you have further questions?
Oh, okay, I'll throw my, my big question in and I, I do this at some risk because we don't want to get in the weeds. But you're talking to a guy who watches student teachers every day and has been in a couple of different districts at the high school level. So my question is about engagement. And I heard someone say, well, we're working on that. And we had some discussions and then somebody said something about my camera's not on, but I can still be engaged. My limited wisdom would be that at some point, staff in a number of districts heard from someone that it is not okay to expect kids to have their camera on because they may not feel comfortable with that. And as a result, my observation and what I have heard from several staff, not all in this district, is that that gave a lot of students an easy way to not have to be engaged. And as a teacher, not having somebody able to look at me and me look at them, it really is a major, major problem. And, and I'm trying to be sensitive to home environments and to alternative strategies and to maybe a phone call home to mom and dad saying, Jay isn't having his camera on. Do you have any problem with maybe creating a different backdrop so that we can get him to show his face and I can see how he's doing? It's, it's a struggle and it's in the weeds in terms of professionalism. So just take it for that and say, good luck on how you're doing it. But also hear that maybe there are some people that have gone too far and we've, we've given kids an out to not have to be engaged.
I know that that was the conversation that the CHS staff were having during their advisor on Wednesday, a conversation about that, about kind of understanding we're going to be at this for a while and what, what engagement looks like in some of those conversations. So yeah, I think we're, those are still things that we're working through.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I want to say it's very complex. There's the technology piece, connectivity and so many variables where one size will not fit all in terms of expectations around these things. Yeah.
Good question.
Thanks, Jay. Any more questions?
I think Vince and Lou.
Vince?
Well, Jay, I have to, just to comment, you know, I know, I can't speak as an educator, but I can tell you in my household, student engagement is definitely a challenge. It's just really tough to keep kids on, at least my kids on task. So I totally hear you. I was just really, I just, I really, it's more of a comment and I know that I don't have an answer to my question because this is work in progress. But I just, I just want to say that I really appreciate the discussion around alignment you know, across schools. This has been a slow march that this district and this board has been working on towards a managed curriculum model and making sure that, that we have alignment in curriculum across schools. We've, we've largely achieved that, but then aligning our delivery and, and instruction as well. And you know, in training that I've been consuming, I've, I'm really, really excited about this idea of using instruction and, and curriculum as an equity tool, as an equalizer and creating opportunity for kiddos. And so I'm just, I'm just really excited to hear this conversation, to hear that elementary is well on the way or primaries on the way and that secondary is working on it. My question is about our online academy in that I realized that we had to move very swiftly to buy curriculum products to get them deployed in time for the start of the school year. And I'm just wondering, you know, are the, you know, our teaching and learning team that we have online, are you guys thinking about how to align these to our existing curriculum or in-person or the hybrid model curriculum? And how, where are we going to go if we're going to keep our online academy going forward after the pandemic is resolved? What is that going to look like? Or have we even started thinking about that? Or is that a conversation? So that's, that's where my head's at.
So what I would say to that is that we, my, my hope would be to get students back into schools, into classrooms, rather than to maintain a separate Corvallis Online in the future. It felt like this was an important option for families right now. But it's not necessarily something that I have a vision of maintaining into perpetuity. But I also think there's conversations that need to happen around utilization of Canvas as a learning management system, even when we're back together and some of those components. So I think there's things that we will take with us from this. But I also think that one of the things we know is that that an online program isn't necessarily what we have done historically. And I don't know that it's something that will, I think we'll have conversations about it, but essentially, and my initial thought is that it's a, something to provide right now, but it's not something we want to do long term.
Yeah, and I wasn't necessarily advocating one avenue or another. I was just really just trying to, I guess, maybe open that conversation.
I think Vince, the, a thing I would want to like add to that is for the elementary portion, I, I don't, there is differences between the curriculum. But where I see the alignment happening is in how we're coaching and supporting staff and the professional development that staff are having because they are still Corvallis teachers. And they'll be returning right into hybrid or into in-person teaching at some point. And so we want them to have the same perspective and skills that we hope all of our teachers have. And so for me, I see that curriculum is different, but how we're supporting and helping our staff learn and develop is the, I see that as the same.
Awesome. Thank you, Byron.
Lou and Ventina? Lou?
Okay, I have, I had one question, but now I have two. I'll do one of them, I'll do the grading one first. It was mentioned in the, I think in the secondary hybrid one about grading and some changes to that. And I was curious about, or some updates on that. And I was curious if there's, if you can share more about that.
Yeah, I can. I don't have the full document up. I can go off my head and I would prefer to have it. I can go off my head and I would prefer to have it, have it in front of me. But I can start by just saying, we, some of the things that came up as we put together this guidance was the destructive power of a zero in a 100% or 100-point system where, you know, it's only 40 of the points are passing and then, or percent, 40 points or 40%, and then 60% are failing. And so we gave guidance around not assigning zeros if teachers are using that kind of scale, but assigning a 50% grade because a zero can be irrecoverable for students. We also, we provided some like mandatory and then like optional, but really good practice that was a much bigger change. One of those bigger changes is proficiency grading, so using a zero to four scale where you don't have that, that really powerful zero in a four-point scale versus 100-point scale. So that, that was a big shift in the guidance. We also give guidance around retakes. I still haven't even pulled it up yet. So I'm just thinking about what were the things, what are all of the things? I've been hearing a lot about grades because it took a little bit to get the Canvas Gradebook up and going and then shared with families. And now we're coming up on quarter, quarter grading. And so
Couple other ones.
Teachers are looking at it.
A couple others, Nikki, were the piece around behavior and grading and extra credit and grading and some of those practices were also included in that. And so some changes to those practices as well. So that, and again, I'm just going off the top of my head as you're, as you're pulling it up. But again, making some shifts across the board in terms of understanding where we're at right now and where kids are at right now and making sure that the grading practices better align with what students know and are able to do.
Yeah, I think, Ryan, we got at a lot of it. A couple of other pieces that I see in here are about assigning grades for individual work, not based on group grades, just kind of being cognizant of both the pandemic and the fact that grades should represent what a student knows and can do and how hard it can be to determine and what an individual has mastered in a group grade. And then also really focusing on those larger projects or assessments rather than, than homework and practice as the, the majority of the grade. Because so much about homework and practice is based on students having space and support to do that work.
Thanks so much, Nikki. Those are some really important changes. And I think a good example of the district putting into practice some of the things that were promised, especially around using an anti-racist lens and, and having equitable systems. So thank you for sharing that. And I hope people realize that what a positive impact this can have on students in the community. So thank you. And then my other one is about the video on conversation and about student engagement and the concerns I have around resistance to that and the situations that some students are in that can lead to cyberbullying or exposing home life situations that they don't want other people to be aware of as well as students with mental health challenges because of not just the pandemic, but just in general, and feeling like they're being watched. And I want it to be really clear that those are concerns that, of why camera off is, should be an option. I know personally, teaching remotely too, it's really challenging. And I just know that some students are not engaged and there's nothing I can do about that, whether their camera's on or off because of whatever their circumstances and it's not my role. And I don't think it should be teachers' roles to penalize students for their home circumstances or their life circumstances. And I just wanted to know what the stamp, like the official stance, if that could be mentioned as far as having camera on or camera off, or video on, video off during classrooms.
Yeah, so I can speak to that. We have taken a very clear stance that students are not to be penalized for having cameras off. And that's something we've talked about pretty extensively. I think you just highlighted a lot of the really important points about why that's not really up for discussion. I think, I appreciate that everybody is interested in supporting students having high levels of engagement. And I think also people are, we continue to centralize that connection and mental health and those kinds of stabilities are priority. There are a number of limitations that we know people have and we're really going to do everything we can to support our connections in whatever ways that students can show up. There are lots of teachers who are doing lots of amazing creative things that have students engaged, whether their cameras are on or not. It does come with challenges. I presented at a conference just a few days ago and most everyone's camera was off. And there was lots about that. That was super awkward. But we have taken a very firm message around that, Lou. And I appreciate you asking for a clear message around that because that has been what we have said. I think there are good conversations happening around engagement, but we have been very clear that students are not to be penalized. Students are, instruction should not stop and wait for someone to turn their camera on, right? All of those things are not okay.
Great, thanks. I appreciate that. That was super clear for everyone. And yeah, that was my two questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Tina.
So Lou basically asked my question, but I just wanted to tag along to what Sabrina had to say and what we had to say. If we're going to look at the questions and commit by requiring video, I think we are failing to look up this through an equity lens. We know that we have students who have mental health issues by, you know, feeling that they can't engage when the camera is on. And then we also have kiddos who are on 504s and IETs who can't consistently engage on a consistent basis with cameras on. And they might need to get up and move around a little bit as they listen to the lecture. Then we also need to look at this through an equity lens of cultural issues. Sometimes, you know, we do, some cultures don't like inviting everybody into their home. And when you have a camera on, we're not being mindful of cultural identities. And so I think that Sabrina, I'm glad that the district is recognizing that it's not a requirement for students to have video on. And I think that if we're going to start addressing, you know, requirements, we need to start thinking about an equity issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. Jay?
So I just want to clarify, Sabrina, is it a matter open for discussion with teachers that they can approach Sally, the student, and her parents and say, do you have a problem with having the camera on? And if so, no problem. But if, if it's a matter where I'm used to dealing with juniors and seniors who, who, they don't, they don't share with mom and dad that they're not camera on. But as soon as I talk to that parent and they say, wow, of course Sally can have her camera on, are you open to that? Or are you letting the student raise the, the no camera on, on their own? How do you see yourself and the district working with that kind of an issue?
I guess I would just say that I don't see that as any different than any other conversations that we have when we are wanting to connect with students and see how they're doing and whether they're able to engage and are finding themselves connected to me as the instructor and the class. So yeah, I actually don't think it's a great strategy for a teacher to call a student and say, hey, your camera's off, what's going on with you? I think it's really great to call and say, hey, how are you doing? And how's this class going for you? And are you feeling connected to what's going on here? I don't think that attacking the conversation about the camera is going to get you nearly the kind of content and quality of conversation and connection that asking a student how they're doing and what's happening for them in the class and what's working for them will do. I think we come back to if we're lodged on whether the camera is on or off, we're really probably missing the point of the connection and the conversation and the goal, which is much more complex and in-depth than whether or not their camera's on. Do I want teachers to reach out to students and connect? 100%, absolutely. And I would hope that they're doing that. And I know that lots and lots of people are. Do I want them to call and say, I saw your camera was off? No, not, not really, because I don't know that that's going to lead to a productive conversation. I think connecting is what's important.
So thank you, Sabrina. Thanks, Jay. I want to move on. I know there's more topics and I want to give them some more time. So Theresa, if you have a brief question?
I, it's really a comment related to this camera piece. I'd really like to affirm the district's position to not enforce this issue of the camera at any age level. I think we just can't possibly understand from person to person the experience that is happening for that individual of sitting in front of a camera and knowing that if someone chooses to watch them, all, even if their smallest micro actions are able to be picked up by someone and to not be able to know who is choosing to look at you and pay attention to you can be a very uncomfortable and even threatening experience for some people. So I really think that's not a direction for us to go. If the issue is about making sure that we're creating opportunities for interface or interactions, have we looked at whether or not the Zoom accounts that we have for our district allow for things like in Zoom polling so that you can ask students questions and they can reply? I don't know if we have that in the Zoom feature that the district is using. I, I have it at LBCC. I use it with my students. So it's a way that I can ask a question and students can, you know, I can see who's responded, but they don't see who's responded. They just see what I show, the results. And so it's a way to have some in, some in-class interaction. Sometimes I will ask a volunteer to monitor the chat line, the chat, the chat bar, and let me know if someone has asked a question so that there's a student who's like actively going to look at that for me and, and work with me to make sure that things don't get missed. And, and that's a way to bring in, in student participation for, you know, those who want to volunteer. And then using, you know, I usually will post some kind of, you know, quick three-question about, say, something that happened in class that people might want to comment on, that they can submit anonymously. And I can always tell from that if people actually were in the class or not. But it's not a setup. It's not a trick quiz. It's not, there's no way you can get this right if you weren't in the room. It's just a, it's a way for me to kind of say what, what worked and what didn't work about our discussion today. And I have found that those are giving me plenty of feedback as an instructor about who's paying attention. So I don't know if our Zoom account can allow for polling. If it can't, that might be a really great feature to give, really at all ages. I mean, I could see our third and fourth graders really loving to get to cast a vote on something and, and watch the numbers tally up. But, but it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a way to create some interaction and let people be in charge of making known their presence without asking them to be on the spot. And then certainly not contacting the parents to talk about that. Because if I was 15 and my teacher called my parents to ask, I can tell you that not only would I not be happy with my parents, I'd probably stop engaging with that instructor altogether. I'd feel pretty violated.
Next, Theresa. Vince, very briefly, let's say 30 or 30 seconds or one minute maximum.
I can do it in 30 seconds. So I just feel on this topic of video on, video off and student engagement, I just feel, I, I, I think particularly for people who are listening live or are going to watch this video, need to understand that nine weeks ago, our educators came to work and they had never taught online before. That was never an expectation for them and that they're skilling up. And so right now, I mean, student engagement is a, is a skill just like any other. And we're going through that right now. And there's a lot, just like Theresa said, I mean, polling is just one way of doing online engagement aside from being eye to eye to a camera. So I think, you know, I have a lot of grace for educators right now and for our instructional leaders that we have online with us right now as they're skilling up all our educators in this, in this realm that they haven't been working in previously. So just a lot of appreciation for, appreciation for the hard work that's going on right now and grappling with this tough question.
Yeah, thank you. And I really appreciate the discussion around this from everybody. So I'll, I'll hand it back to Ryan and the presenters if there's more topics you want to discuss.
Yeah, there's, so there's three other areas to cover. Lindsay, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide for us. Operations, budget and finance. And then the next one is care and connection on the next slide. But for now, an update on operations and budget and finance.
And so I'm going to cover this and I'm not really even going to go into much more detail than what you see on the slides there. We've closed our district buildings to non, all non-district use. We have PPE available for staff in all of our buildings. We've been putting health and safety stations in place in every classroom. We've encumbered and/or spent all of our CARES Act federal funds. A lot of that went towards the PPE. And we're preparing a supplemental budget for the board to consider in December. And that will reflect all of the reconciliation of our budgets, particularly around the loss of revenue with the student investment account and the loss of revenue associated with lower students.
Thank you, Olivia. Brief question for, from me. The, I'm not sure if it's an exception or not about non-district building use, but the Health Center is operational, correct?
Correct. The Lincoln Student-Based Health Center, yes. And that's not a, it's not technically like a district-owned building. And so, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was shifted for new construction, but it's still operational.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And then Care and Connection, I think it's Sabrina and Joe that are going to bring us home on this one.
It's true.
Thank you.
Hey. So this group met in the spring like everyone else. We had two groups that were meeting. So we had a group of about just over 100 people that were a collection of predominantly staff in, as counselors, special ed teachers, ELL teachers, mental health staff, some of our behavior support staff. It was a pretty racially diverse group as well as kind of the many different facets of specialists within our K-12 spectrum. This group met a handful of times over the spring like the other RDTs. And then we also had a small group that has met and has continued to meet now into the fall. And that group is again, a collection of specialists as well as parents and is still somewhat racially diverse, kind of giving us multiple perspectives, which is one of the main points that this group had focused on. I would say the work of this team really shows up, probably similar to the work like Marcy Anne's where we're looking at how to refine the work that's happening. We talked a lot about how that work and the feedback that we were getting from families and students could really inform the work that maybe Nikki and Amy's groups were doing with kind of larger, bulkier product decisions. So thinking a lot about things like effective communication that really centralized the needs of our families who are feeling marginalized, looking at those grading practices and thinking about how to have much more appropriate grading practices that really locate students at the center of those practices, particularly students who are in more marginalized groups and really giving input into those areas. That group has come back together this fall to continue those conversations with a really significant goal of continuing to put students and families of color at the center of those conversations and thinking about how all of our systems operate out from there and what do we need to continue to refine and adjust to really keep those voices as centrally located. I would say in addition to that, this team, including all of our specialists, so when you think about ELL teachers and special ed teachers and counselors and mental health therapists and all of these staff that have their hands in really complex areas of their buildings, that really the energy is around care and connection with families. There are just inherent profound limitations that our students are experiencing right now with distance learning. And so really keeping the focus on consistent, predictable forms of communication with families that help everybody to stay regulated because we know the impact of this is so significant, particularly around mental health.
I think that I would add to Sabrina's conversation by saying, one of the big things that we've talked a lot about since last year when we started deploying mental health resources was really this idea that we're moving away from magical interventions that a specific group of people with a specific magical set of abilities will come in and resolve a lot of the social, emotional and mental health concerns that are occurring and shifting to an idea that we really need to teach skills. We need to teach skills to students, to families and to our staff. And really this concept of drastically building capacity to help deal with the social, emotional toll that is being waged against our community by COVID-19. that is being waged against our community by COVID-19 and the racial inequity epidemics. So a lot of the work that we're continuing to do is working with building teams to continue to enhance their capacity to have hard conversations, talking with staff about how they're doing their own self-management as they carry heavier and heavier loads of social, emotional information and just really vicarious traumatization from the families that we're talking to in the community.
So as you can see, we have made a lot of progress since August and where we're at right now. And at the same time, we have, we have work that's still ongoing. I see that there is a question from Vince, so I won't, I won't close us out quite yet. But really, we wanted to come back tonight and share with you the ongoing work. So you have a sense as, as board members and as the community who's watching via YouTube just about the, the work that's been taking place. And just, we know this is hard. We know this isn't the way we would prefer to be providing education to our students in our community. And at the same time, we're working really hard to make it, make it as strong as possible. So we just again, wanted to share that update with you, so you have a strong sense of where we're at.
Thank you Ryan, and thank you staff, everybody who presented. And the soldiers in the school buildings and their home really delivering this amazing delivery for our kiddos. It's phenomenal and it's highly appreciated. You're doing phenomenal work. And the investments in education haven't been ever more important and critical. We're transforming systems, we're rebuilding some systems, and we're looking at our blind spots as much as possible in, in the middle of a storm. So really, deep appreciation for the work you do.
Thanks.
Do I have any questions or comments?
I did see there was one from Vince.
Yeah, Vince?
So, I mean, my, my, my thoughts around this care and connection component and how we've talked about our, our fifth goal, fifth goal, fourth goal is around health, and particularly, we've really focused on mental health. And I'm really grateful for the work that last year that the board did with, with Joe and Sabrina. Because I know that the board is aware of the investment that has been made. We know the types of people that we have embedded in our schools. What I don't know is what's our, what's our current situational, what's our status right now with regards to the challenges that kiddos and families are experiencing right now? I don't have a sense of that. I don't know what success looks like, and I don't know how we're tracking progress to that. And I know that those are really big questions that I just threw out there. And I don't expect an answer tonight, because I know you guys are super busy and doing amazing work. But I think it's something that as a board, we need to think about. What, what are expectations for the system that we've, that we've created? And what other resources do we need to reach what, what that expectation is? So I guess I'm get, I guess I'm processing out loud really is what I'm doing. But I mean, if you want to react to that, I'd appreciate it, but.
I'll, I'll share a small piece, which is in terms of what kind of outcomes can we expect and what students and families are experiencing? So what we're, what our community and what the world is experiencing is a global traumatic event. And so Dr. Bruce Perry, who does a lot of landmark research in the area of trauma, I think he said this quite, quite clearly in a lot of his webinars since COVID-19 has hit, which is you actually can't assess the impact of a traumatic event during the traumatic event. You can't actually tell how much post-traumatic stress disorder, how much post-traumatic stress syndrome people will experience in the middle of it. Nobody is experiencing PTSD related to this. We're experiencing acute stress disorder. We're in it. Part of this is continuing to build capacity and continuing to talk about these issues so that we can do the first aid, the mental health first aid that people need right now, and also acknowledge that at the end of this, there's recovery work. There's educational recovery work, and there'll be mental health recovery work that will have to be done.
Thank you for that perspective. That's really helpful for me.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you Joe. It's, that, that puts things in perspective. We want to solve everything right now, but when you fight a fire, you do your best before the fire comes in to prevent it. You prioritize how you fight the fire, and after the fire, you make sure to see what happened and how you can rebuild. And I'm not sure if that's appropriate analogy, but the, the idea of recovery and being aware that we are responding right now. We are trying to do business as usual, but also we have to be aware, some of the impacts and effects will be in that recovery phase. Not that we're procrastinating, but that's the nature of any emergency or any traumatic event. It's, there are stages of management for the situation, and one of them is response and the other one is recovery. So I really appreciate that input. Vince, any other questions? Sorry, I spoke over you.
No, no, I think that's it. I guess Joe, the, the other thing is that I know that, that you'll be presenting at OSBA Virtual Annual Conference. And I just that, that perspective I think is really important. The other is that just because you make the investment of really skilled people and deploy them in their schools, that's not a magic wand. And really that skill development piece, I think is a really important message that we need to deliver to the rest of the state.
Well, again, thanks for letting us provide you with an update.
Thank you, appreciate it. Seeing we're, no further questions, I want to thank staff again, I appreciate your time. And the next item on the agenda is Division 22 Assurances Reports. So we do have a report that has been submitted to our board. And do we have a presentation on it or just entertaining questions?
I, yeah, just entertaining questions. I have it in front of me though. This is the same Division 22 report that you typically approve in February. The date has moved to November, and it will be November from here on out. It also reflects the closures of schools during, between March and June. So the number of standards that we had to meet were reduced, and we are compliant on all of our standards.
Wonderful. Is this our second time or first time to be compliant to now all standards?
I think first.
Okay.
First in the last six years, how's that?
All right, I like it.
So virtual high five, I think that's related to the alcohol prevent. I don't know how to word it, but related to education.
Prevention education, yeah.
Alcohol prevention education. So thank you. Vince?
I was, you, you stole it again. I was gonna say congratulations for compliance the first time ever since I've been on the school board. So hooray. And then I, then Chair Abdurahid, love to, if you would entertain a motion, I'd love to make one.
What's your motion?
My motion is I move to approve the Division 22 Report for Submission to the Oregon Department of Education and to be published on the district website.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who, who was that?
Theresa.
Theresa, wonderful. So any further discussion on the motion? See none, we'll go, we'll enter into a vote. Any further discussion? No, all right. See none, we'll enter into a vote. Vince, what's your vote?
Aye.
Jay, what's your vote?
Aye.
Tina, what's your vote? Lou, Lou, what's your vote? Theresa, what's your vote?
Aye.
Sarah, what's your vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye, passes unanimously, and congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. So that's, that's being said, we will go into the next item of the agenda, which is reports on hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, menacing, cyberbullying, teen dating, violence or domestic violence related to students. So I want to really highlight, thank you for the detailed reports and for providing those details. And again, same question, do we have a presentation or a discussion? Or do you want us to ask board members for feedback?
I believe Melissa put this together, so just to confirm with her, my sense is that open to questions at this point in time. But any information you want to provide as sort of an overview?
Um, I, I gave you a good overview here, and I also made a connection to the new policy that we'll be looking at in November. So even though you saw drafts as you connected to that in this report, they're not up for first read right now. That's gonna happen in November, but I just wanted to make sure that we had that connection. My goal in putting this together from Ryan was so that to open up conversation for this board to have around hazing, harassment and bullying, that might be a conversation that you've been wanting to have. So just to kind of give you some background and a, and a starting place. And then if you have questions, things like that, I'm here for those as well.
Thank you. With that, anyone have questions, feedback? And I see Vince is your hand from before.
No, this is for this one.
You're up first and then Lou.
Okay, so I actually have two items to discuss. But the first one, so I had a whole raft of questions that I sent to Melissa. But one that, that you, you weren't sure what I was asking was around what mechanism are we using to capture bias response that go unreported? And so there are going to be kiddos that are going to be comfortable using whatever the bias response system and report that in a formal way. But there are going to be kiddos that aren't. And I'm concerned about those kiddos. And so how are we capturing that information? And so we can use that to track the, the true incidents or as much as we can, we can practically do, can have the true incidence of bias incidents? Wow, that's, sorry.
Yeah.
But actually getting the number that's actually happening and then the nature of them so that we can apply programming to intervene.
Yeah, investigation.
That's that, and that, and so, I mean, I think I, somewhere in here, I talked about youth truth. But I mean, what are the ways that we're collecting that information if kiddos aren't comfortable, you know, using a formal system? And I think safe is another, I'll let you answer.
Yeah, safe is a great place. Obviously, our students are more than willing to share their own experiences and, and talk about that. We're finding a lot, finding that kids are a lot more vocal than we would imagine. And really, you know, bringing things up to adults is becoming more and more a norm. But I would like to highlight, I know Corvallis High School, they have an equity coach now. And part of their work this year is to create, or they did create a Google form that a student can submit electronically if something's happening, especially a racial harassment incident, that they can submit if they don't want to have that kind of face-to-face with an adult, but they do want some, they want to let someone know something's happened. Everything follows the same way that it would if we were doing an investigation for racial harassment after that. But it maybe, it's, it's things like that. What can we look at to help kids to kind of, if they're really worried about, you know, talking to an adult, is putting it into the computer, using Safe Oregon, for example, to, to highlight those kinds of incidents, all of this. You can't be anonymous, but you can at least maybe feel a little bit more comfortable doing it from your computer and not maybe in the face-to-face way until you know that someone's gonna do something about it. And I think that's a lot of it too. A lot of students are worried about reporting because they don't know what the response is going to look like or if someone even cares to respond. So we also have a responsibility to build that trust with our students that when we hear something's happening, we are going to take care of it.
Thank you for that last piece. That was where my head went next, because really what we're doing, yes, this is a nuts and bolts system that we're deploying. But really what we're aiming at is changing culture.
Right.
Changing organizational culture and changing the culture of the community and what's acceptable and what is not. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Lou?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions and they want to say like, I know I brought this one up several times and like that it is close to me, the anti-bullying curriculum and today is actually the one-year anniversary. I don't know what that background is. Is it because there's some weird background? Okay, there now I can, no, it's not doing it, okay. But today's the one-year anniversary of my nephew dying of suicide as a result of school-based bullying. And so this is one of the policies that we have that is super up close and personal to me as a board member and community member. And on page three of the cover sheet or on the report, it says that there was ten formal complaints via the online complaint form. But there's also, it says at times, there's an informal process that never gets submitted. And to me, that's a big concern, and that's something I've brought up a couple of times of where that information goes. And from what I understand, and I know this is probably borderlining on like operational, but from, I don't know where it needs to be or how it needs to be discussed. But if stuff is staying in the buildings and not being reported fully, like how are we gonna ever know how the extent of the bullying problem in the district? And Vince brought up a couple of things too about like the nature of it. So like, is it based on sexuality, gender, race, religion, socioeconomic? What's it based on to make those critical interventions? That was kind of one of my questions, and I think you kind of talked a little bit about how there's some changes that are happening with some reporting forms. But I think that, that is a serious concern. I think that we need to take seriously. And how we can get that data compiled a little bit better so we can have a more comprehensive view of what's going on and assess the needs for not just like what kind of, what kind of information can be presented as like, this isn't okay? And like how to address the specific things, but also to train people on how to respond to bullying that are in the, in the buildings, interacting with kids experiencing bullying. So that was kind of my question about it, like that part, like when is that gonna happen?
So the building, the building-based data is there. In fact, I looked at it this week so I could just kind of get an idea in my head of what's happening in the, in the buildings with regard to numbers and types. And we use the student information system to enter behavior incidents. This, this headline, the harassment, intimidation, cyberbullying, that is one of the clicks that you can make as to the incident type. And then beyond that, you can also indicate what type. So there could be, it could be sexual harassment, it could be, you know, a variety of things. So that is tracked. We tracked it. You, you can see the student who was involved, you can see what their role and maybe what their motive might have been. And also what happens as a result, there was a lot of, a lot of work in the buildings of parent conversations, mediation, parent conferences, student parent conferences, a lot of those kinds of things were happening as a result of those, those incidents happening and being reported. Every elementary school, every middle, every high school had some sort of a harassment report last year when I was looking through. And what I saw as far as trends were a lot in elementary school and reduced numbers as you got to middle school and high school. So some, whatever that shift is, there's a shift there as they're getting older into middle and high school. What I would like to do, because I'm kind of just looking at it this week, kind of like sparked a lot of interest in me is looking at what kinds of, of harassments are happening at specific buildings, looking at the demographics, obviously, to see what that, how that plays in. Also making sure, because Vince was what was asked a question about disproportionate numbers of students of color who are being disciplined. So what does that look like as well? Why do we have differences at different buildings with regard to numbers and type? So there's a lot of work to do there, and it can tell us a lot of stories. And so just having conversations with a couple of different members of the teaching and learning team, that's something that we want to get into this year.
Thanks Melissa, looking forward to the information and thanks for doing that. I know it's a lot of number crunching and pulling things together and everything. And I don't know if there's a way to just like have a magic software.
Her name is Lori Corliss. She's the magic software person. And I'm going to ask her to help me. Have a person that can help, yeah.
Thank you for taking the bullying stuff very seriously.
Absolutely.
Oh, one more comment. Sorry, I did have one more. I know it's not like a first review or anything, but I appreciate the distinction of what kind of swastikas are being discussed since we've received like numerous. And also, that's also a Native American design as well. And so that's basically like from all the literature, that's where he got that design as well as like the conception of concentration camps based on reservations. So that's all documented and stuff. So I appreciate you all putting in there specifically which kind of swastika is.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we do, I think I mentioned this at our last meeting, but we do have a meeting coming up with the chair and vice chair of the Department of Education and a couple of folks from ODE to come. and a couple of folks from ODE to come and meet with students or past students who share, have shared those emails with all of you to help with the permanent rule once that gets, as that's getting written. So that's something that's going to be happening in the next couple of weeks that we'll be able to share back with you.
Yeah. And we really thank you for the districts on working on that because now we're going to implement that feedback that Corvallis community members have brought up in our district, but also across the state.
Yeah.
It's been very appreciated. Thank you. Lou, more comments? Thank you. So next up is Vince, then Tina, and then Jay. So Vince?
So first I want, I want to say, you know, this is, this is a tough topic and we're talking very grumpy. But I just want to say I'm really enthusiastic. This is great work and it's really important. So I just wanted to say that. You talked about reporting just a little bit ago and I asked about that. One of the roles of the board is to hold the district accountable. And I think that this is something I think the board is probably very interested in. And I wanted to raise the topic of what resolute, you know, what temporal resolution would we like, would the board like to see now? I mean, the governance side of me says we should just embed this in our strategic plan in our, you know, our annual data that we review and probably tie it to the discipline data and come to it once a year. But then there's the heart of me that says, I really would like to see this by semester. So maybe get it at the beginning of the school year and then in the middle of the school year, I think is probably a semi-realistic or it'd be right after the first semester when this data becomes available. And I don't know what other board members are feeling, but I just feel like this is a topic that is front and center for our community. I think it's front and center for this board. It's certainly front and center for me. And so I, I would like to see this data fairly frequently if that's possible. But I, I also want to be mindful of not meddling in the operations of the district and getting in your way either.
This is good work that we need to do too. So that's why I, I was wondering the same thing as to how many times the board would like to see that and when, how, that kind of thing.
And then the other area, the reason why we focused, or Melissa focused on the policy pieces just again, sometimes there's policy modifications that needed, need to happen. And so we also felt like that might be an area for board, board consideration. And so that's why we also included that, the, the links to those policies in the report.
So I kind of presented a question for other board members and I was hoping that we could hear from other board members how frequently you'd like to see this, this data.
Yeah.
Once a year enough?
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep that hands up for the other topics and let's enter to that question from Vince. Anyone wants to speak to it?
I, I would say just, I want to put in one more piece. And that is, I think it would be helpful for us to have the chance to work with Lori to see how frequently that can come to you. You've always been really aware of her time and her ability as well as her aptitude. And so I, I, what I would suggest is giving us some time based on the conversation tonight to come back to you with some recommendations.
That sounds really good.
Okay.
Does that okay with you Vince and everybody?
Yeah, that's.
I mean, you know, ideally that's why we're bringing this topic to you to find out what you want to know more about. And then for us to go back, it's almost like a first reading in some ways. For us to go back and sort of process how to, how to make that happen.
So we'll have that question on the table for later on. And Tina, you're up next.
First, I just wanted to say that this is so important to address and I just want to say thank you for bringing all the information to us. I'm just curious, what type of training do the administrators and teachers have received or are they going to receive? What bullying and harassment looks like for certain protected classes? And, and for students of color and their culture, because you know, what example that I'm thinking about right now is misgendering or deadening is, is an act of violence towards, is trans or non-binary students. And so do our staff and administrators know that that's an act of violence towards another, another child? Or, I mean, what kind of training is going on and what training has they had?
So we've had bias training, we, we did bias training at the start of the year and cultural competence. So we can understand a little bit better that way. We continue to have training for our, for LGBTQ issues, especially in person and also trainings that occurred online prior to the start of the year. The staff are required to go through this policy each year also. Read and, and kind of, and sign off that they've read it and understand it. I'm thinking that there's also the things that happen in buildings, but I can gather more information that way with particulars. We also work with our student behavior staff to ensure that that there's consistency in the way that they are reporting certain incidents into the behavior system so that we are comparing apples to apples when it comes to the data. So that's really important too.
Good, thank you Melissa.
Thanks Tina.
Next Tina, any more questions or comments?
Jay.
Jay?
First, I would like to see the copy of the intake. What you just said is really critical that everybody's on the same page. And I know we, when we talked about this before, we talked about, are we asking the right questions and collecting the right thing? So I would love to see how, how we, a person who's in charge of interviewing and taking in that, that they're prompted to go now ask about these things. So that would be interesting to me if you could send a copy. I think the other thing that hit me when I read this was, and this is kind of in the weeds, but if you look at the bottom of that policy, it has that Tinker case and then it has a Ninth Circuit case. And as the ex-lawyer in me, I went, what are those about? And why did Tinker get involved? And I'm, I'm here to raise the concern maybe that at least for some people, some person's bias might be another person's free speech. And, and you have to be very, very careful both ways. I am, I mean, I, I've shared with you before, but the saddest day of my career was a boy committing suicide that had been bullied and at Corvallis High. So I absolutely abhor bullying and intimidation. And then I also value big time free speech. And so I'm just throwing that out as to other people have thought about, there's, there's conflict and school boards have gotten themselves sideways on, on how to make, make sure that, that the tinkers didn't leave their rights at the schoolhouse gate and yet kids can be free from bullying and intimidating. So it's just a maybe editorial comment.
Well, and I, I have a response to it. Also just keeping in mind that at the same time, we don't have to give equal time to speech that is hate speech or speech that is inappropriate in some of those areas. And so
Agreed, agreed.
So while, you know, you don't leave your constitutional rights at the schoolhouse gate under Tinker, that also doesn't mean that you get to come and, and, and share hate speech either. So there, there, there are some parameters that as a school system that we get to, get to maintain, which are different than what you get out in, out in regular community.
Yeah, and I will add to that.
I think Jayce, Jayce said something else.
But he's muted.
Okay.
Classic one for me came up just a little while ago where student A is appearing in his room with a Trump flag behind him and was told, be careful that that makes people feel uncomfortable. And I'm saying, I absolutely agree, Ryan, and I would lean way, way, way strong on protecting our kids. And then I'm just saying heads up as school boards do these, you know, tough calls, we, we get ourselves into issues.
Vince and I attended a really good training, because I think you went Vince, same too, with OSBA about, about that student speech aspect. So I know this because Vince asked me a question that was related exactly to what we did.
I'm going to comment on it too.
So I, I think that we, we have a lot of good guidance from OSBA about making sure that we don't censor speech or discipline on speech unless we can forecast a substantial disruption. Or if, unless it impinges on the rights of, of others and it's that, that right to be kind of, what is it left alone? And secure in their, in their being. So we've got some, we've got some parameters there that we can use and part of all of this and the end of all of this is the, the all students belong policy is going to end up being a training that we're going to give all of our administrators on what, on the new policy and also on how to investigate bias incidents. And a lot of that will be, a lot of conversation about what is bias and exactly what you're talking about, Jay. Where does, where does all of that fall? So we're going to be doing a lot of teaching.
Nice.
Thank you, Melissa. I appreciate that. And I was going to mention that training, it was earlier this week and I believe there's a recording. But really the bottom line, the two parameters that you mentioned were what's OSBA said, this is your tool to say this is where the speech passes the fine line of being acceptable. So thank you for mentioning that. And maybe we can share it with the rest of the board if there's a recording for it. Any further comments, Jay? All right, up next is, I see Tina and Vince. But if you're both okay, I'm going to recognize myself with three brief questions. Okay. And then I'll go back to you Vince, since I recognized you twice. With that, I will say I have few things that there might be overlapping with the comments. One of the qualifications I have is the 10 formal complaints that we received between September 1, 2019 and June 30th, 2020, they all have been concluded or resolved, correct?
Yes, they have.
Perfect. And the other thing that I wanted to ask is those 10 complaints and also everything else that is informal. You highlighted that, Melissa, but I want to just really reiterate it is that when we get those data, whether formal or informal, there is systemic learning that we're getting out of those and maybe systemic change that we find out is necessary to implement. And I think in addition to the data, with whatever frequency we would agree on later on, I think that would be something to highlight as well. Those are the themes that we discovered and this is the changes that we're implementing. Or these are the changes that we propose for a policy to be adapted. If you feel that systemic change is needed on a policy level. And I believe all students belong is one of those systemic learnings that we're getting statewide from previous complaints. So I don't know if you have any comments about that or any feedback?
When I looked at those 10 formals, and, and again, just to be really clear, the formals are people going to the website, we talk about this all the time, finding the complaint process on the, on the website and filing a harassment complaint there. And of those 10 formal, like you said, all were resolved either at the building or they moved up to my level and, and resolved with me. So that if you look at the, the hazing and harassment and bullying policy, there's a place in there that talks about the, the kind of, the kind of harassment and it's numbered one, two, three, physically harming, knowingly placing a student in physical fear or fear of the physical harm. And then the third is creating a hostile educational environment. So if I classified these 10 with, using that criteria, seven of them were complaints about a hostile educational environment. And it was typically, you know, name-calling, bullying, unkind words that were rising to the level that a parent wanted to file a formal complaint about it. And three of them were physical. So there was probably name-calling and unkind words in addition to some sort of physical, you know, pushing, shoving, hitting, things that happen on the playground that lead to, again, also lead to a hostile environment, but they did include physical harm.
Thank you, Melissa. The other comments I have is that now there is this bias complaint process and it's my call for a separate policy. We have two Title IX processes. We have policy KL. If I come from the product development or process development, you want to have a user-friendly one point of entry and we need to cut through the red tape and make sure it's friendly for, and I hate to say that, but victim-friendly process. I don't want them to navigate through one process and then they say, oh, I need to go through the other one.
Other one, yeah.
And I don't know how that would look like, but I believe if KL could be a policy that refers to everything else that maybe needs to be called out to by a separate policy, that would be one recommendation for us. So on a policy level, we can refer folks to one, one document that refers to everything else. But that's really being a single point of entry for me as a, as a board level. But I feel, I feel it's even more important for the user is that they know there is one place for them to navigate through all of these policies or processes and know which one they should start with. So they don't need to start the process again, if that makes sense.
Yes.
And I've, I've actually had experience with that before where a, a district looked at several complaint policies and tried to meld them into one place. So it made sense for, for folks. So yeah, I, I, I hear you. And I, I mean, we just had those conversations about Title IX, the last couple of meetings. And I do think in some ways that makes it more difficult for people to be heard. And that's not the, that's, that's not the intent of these policies.
Yeah.
So thanks, thanks for that insight.
Yeah, absolutely. Vince and then Lou?
Yeah, really quickly, Melissa, as you bring AC, Policy ACB forward, the, those, those the documentation of forecasting, how, you know, the presence of hate symbols can be, you know, cause a material, a substantial disruption to the educational environment. You, you know all those criteria. Just can you please make sure to include that in the cover sheet for the policy? So not all, you know, for the board, because I think it's the, the logical antecedent of why we're adopting this policy, but also for the community and also to dissuade the, and I know it's a remote possibility that someone may bring litigation against the district on the point that Jay was raising around their First Amendment rights. I don't think that's a factor, but I think that we owe it to the community to say, look, this disrupts the educational environment, makes people uncomfortable. We're adopting this policy and we're going to implement it in the district. So it just makes sense.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Vince for that recommendation. Lou?
Yeah, it was interesting. I was actually looking up time, place, manner when Jay brought up that First Amendment comment, which was a little bit hard to hear just because of what I just mentioned. At the beginning of this conversation about bullying. But time, place, manner is something for people that don't know of when First Amendment can be restricted. First Amendment, as people know, is the guarantee of forms of free speech, but there's not, it's not without restraint of any kind. And that's what time, place, manner is about, is about when that can be restricted. And so for example, if it's disrupting a classroom environment, that's usually one place it's been upheld in legal cases. So that was going to be my question about something for during my board comments, but since we were talking about it, I was looking up for that comment. But I was wondering how, if there's a way for that to be clear for community members and for our board packet of how time, place, manner applies to K-12 because it does. And Ryan, he already said that a little bit too, without saying time, place, manner about like, it doesn't have to be allowed on school. And so I think it's important for people to know why. Why that exists and when it can be applied. And it's actually a federal thing. It's not like a, I'm going to take it up with ODE. This is a federal regulation, time, place, manner. And it's applied, it's, it's applied all the time. And I hope people learn more about it from my mini spiel and appreciate if y'all can help community understand the role it plays in this policy and also in the buildings in general.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Appreciate it. Any further questions or comments or recommendations on the report? Truly thank you, Melissa. I shared this with our leadership on the caucus of color for school board members and I received positive feedback. I think one of the board members in another district mentioned that they, they did not see teen dating violence and domestic violence included in the same way that we included it. And they really appreciated that. So that's one positive highlight that I received from my colleagues across the state. So really thank you, the quality of the work that you're doing. We're getting closer to adjust school districts for all of our students. I really appreciate your work on that.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we have consolidated action and I think it is one item. Is that correct? Yes. So ratify. So ratify and a financial agreement with Corvallis Education Agency, CEA, that's our consolidated action. And as a reminder, the items under the portion of the agenda are for action or is for action. Does anyone have a question about anything in the consolidated action?
I'd just like to make a comment to, you know, it has been, it's a tough time to negotiate finances between our associations in our district because of the implications of living in our current state with COVID and also just all of the implications for enrollment and all of those pieces. And sort of looking at the state overall budget outlook going forward. At the same time, I feel like we have worked really closely with one another, and we've been able to communicate well and recognizing the needs of members as well as the needs of the district and maintaining the focus on school days and a strong workforce. And so I feel I'm proud of the fact that we got to this place and have an agreement. And thank you to Vince for being a member of the team and also to Olivia and Jennifer as we've worked together to get to this point tonight. So I would strongly urge you to go ahead and make this a reality for folks so we can keep moving forward.
Thank you, Ryan. Vince?
Yeah, just dovetailing on what the superintendent just said. I just was consistently impressed during these negotiations how the district team worked hand in hand, you know, with the association, with an emphasis on trying to save those resources that are so important for kids, which is school days and equality staff. And that, from the outset, that was always the focus. And I was also impressed with the compassion of the district team was they brought proposals forward, trying to present options that would be, that would be optimal for our teachers within the budget constraint that they were, and the uncertainties that they were struggling with. So once again, just great negotiations on the part of the district and our association or our teachers. I really enjoyed going along. There was a lot of meetings, but it was a rewarding process.
Thank you, Vince. Jay?
I just want to say thank you to the leadership group and to the team that put this together. And I know it's hard work, and Vince, you put it well, it's a compromise of issues and resources. So with that in mind, I move to approve the financial components of the contract with CEA for 2020, '21.
Second?
Well, it's been moved by Jay and seconded by Vince. Any further comments or questions or discussion on the motion? See none, it's been called for a vote. And Tina, what's your vote?
Aye.
Lou, what's your vote?
Aye.
Therese, what's your vote?
Aye.
Jay, what's your vote?
Aye.
Vince, what's your vote?
Aye.
And Sarah, what's your vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye, and the financial agreement has been passed unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you, and really appreciate the work. I want to just reiterate and say this to what you said, Ryan, and Vince, and Jay. I want to say with limited resources and truly creating a new system and new ways of work and reaching an agreement that's fair for everybody, it's hard work. And it takes really good intentions from both sides. It takes really the ability to compromise and to optimize for the best of our kiddos and our working families. So I really appreciate that work.
Thank you.
And with that, I want to say we are a pro-labor board, and we will continue to fight with you to bring more resources for our district and for education. So the challenges remain, and we want to continue supporting our staff. And that means we want to continue talking to our representatives on the state level and federal level to make sure we can sustain our operations and really provide the resources and funding for our staff. So with that, really thank you very much, everybody, for the work. And again, thank you for being the liaison for this negotiation. Appreciate your representation. Next item on the agenda is consolidated information, and we have a bond program update. As a reminder, this is for discussion, and would anyone want to discuss an item on the consolidated information? Vince?
So two questions and a comment. So Dale, you mentioned, thank you for the report on the contract carve-outs for disadvantaged businesses and local contractors. That was really encouraging information. I'm just curious, how is local defined in that context?
Local goes basically Salem, Eugene, and Coast. That's kind of our radius.
Okay. And then my next question is, when can we do tours again? Because there's lots of great construction. And I was going through all the pictures, and I found myself wanting to be there. So when can we get out on site again? And you probably don't have an
I appreciate you saying that, and we'll figure that out. I will add that we're trying to schedule a bond oversight committee tour to recognize their hard work on the 6th. So we'll talk about your request, too.
Awesome. And then my comment is, I love those glue lamb beams on the Lincoln Building. And Lincoln's going up really fast, folks. I mean, Lou, you're right there, but Lincoln is going up really, really fast. It looks great. So thanks a lot.
Yeah, thanks for the work and thanks for the reports. Very, very great details. Any comments, questions? Sarah?
Sorry, I couldn't get my participants' thing up to my hand up. I drove by Lincoln today, and it looks amazing, and I was headed south for something. And I also love, love the colors in the bathroom at Shuttlin. The doors in that bathroom were amazing. This is, I feel like I ask this question every time. So now that we're out of school, or where students won't be in the buildings until January, how is that going to impact, is that changing schedules at all?
I would say that more work is being tackled than we would have otherwise. There would have been some stuff at Garfield, for example, pushed into next summer that we're able to jump on earlier. So we're trying to capitalize where we can. That's really the biggest highlight is Garfield. The other projects are kind of progressing as they would have originally. And we are planning, clear through, you know, clear through December. So that's several months of, you know, taking advantage of that time.
And then the work at Crescent Valley that will be coming up, some of the electrical stuff that we'll be able to get done, too.
Bids are due on that any day, and there was a tour through the building just a couple of days ago with really good attendance by the subcontractor community. So we're expecting, fingers crossed, some good results here in, gosh, I think it's about two weeks.
Lou has her hand up.
Any more questions, Sarah? All right, Lou?
Okay, I was going to be quiet, but since you brought it, everybody's bringing it up, Lincoln is pretty cool to watch go up, and I encourage people to check out the webcam to see that progress. If you don't have an opportunity to see it in person, because you can totally check it out. And it's kind of funny to hear a now high schooler that went to Lincoln say, wow, I didn't get to go to that school. But then also, I'm really happy for the kids that get to go to it. So it's also that appreciation because of knowing like how awesome it is. And there's now this perception that it's going to be three stories because of that.
That's cool.
Awesome. All right, any further questions or comments? Well, thank you, Dale, I really appreciate your time and work. Right. Last item on the agenda before we adjourn, actually, two. Any board member comments or the other one is future agenda items that you would like to see on the future board agenda? Sarah?
Yeah, sorry, I don't know where my hand raised button went. Yes, I have a comment. It's a follow-up on my comment from last meeting. Vote, anybody who's still watching this meeting tonight, ballots. Most of Corvallis that I know of received ballots on the 15th. If you've not received a ballot at this point, please call the Benton County Elections Office, because you should have it. But, you know, please get those ballots in. Voting is hugely important. Sit down with your kids and vote with them. I have, we have a family tradition of voting with our kids, and I'm hoping, knock on wood, that it will turn them into future voters. So that's one comment. One is the, we saw Albany have an issue with having to, they had opened their schools for a very limited number of students and then had to shut down again because of a COVID outbreak. And part of the problem there was with the community not participating in tracing and quarantining. So I would just like to remind our community that how we choose to follow regulations around COVID testing and tracing and quarantining is going to impact whether our kids go to school. So please, if you are tested, stay home until you know the results of that test. If it's positive, cooperate with the tracers, because that's going to play a huge role in being able to get kids into school buildings.
Thank you, Sarah. Lou?
Thanks for both those, Sarah, those are so important. And just knowing that people are not staying home while they're waiting for results and seeing impacts locally here in the community on public spaces is kind of sad. And knowing that that also impacts the ability for kids to go back to school and staff to be safe in the schools. And also the vote thing, if I could just add on to that, I know you already said how important it is, but I think sometimes, especially from communities that are historically marginalized, are silenced in politics, just want to reiterate how important it is to vote and participate in that way. It took a really long time, especially for women and women of color to be able to vote. And it's something I'm a strong advocate of, in participating in that for all that was given and all the ways that federal policies and local policies have impacted our communities without us having a say. And so voting is one way to participate and have a say in the way that things happen. And then I wanted to go back to the comment, something that I wrote down, and I totally forgot I wrote down because it had a little number mark, and I thought it was a check off, like I had already said it. But this is back to Melissa's comment on the number of reports, recordings of bullying's going down as the age groups are going up. Just recognizing that the incidents probably aren't going down, just the reporting. And that as kids get older, they're less likely to let their parents know what happens. And for younger kids, a lot of times, that's who's reporting. And so just understanding that reality, I know you probably already know that, Melissa, I know you know that, but just like for the community to remember like how important it is to say something, even if it's for a friend that you know is experiencing something, you could potentially save somebody's life or prevent somebody from getting into some major legal trouble, depending on how the bullying escalates. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And then the last thing, actually, the one thing that I was going to bring up is I wanted to give a big shout out to College Hill and to Eric Wright and to Cherie for their response to an incident that happened in the classroom. It's actually the class that two of the kids in my house will go to, and somebody hopping online, yelling racial slurs and some acts of violence and having to shut down the classroom. And the way that the principal, Eric, responded was super fast and it was really a strong statement of that not being tolerated in the classroom. And then to hear the students, or the kids being able to process how that impacted them a couple of days later, not just the day of, I think shows the kind of care that's happening in the schools. And so I wanted to just give College Hill and especially Eric and Cherie a public thank you for how they handled that situation, not just for the kids in my house, but the other kids that were impacted, because it really disrupted the learning that day.
Thank you, Lou. Jay?
I just have to comment in our board emails the last maybe two weeks, and in my own personal visit to a wellness check, we have heard from the community, big concern about wanting to get kids back in the classroom and that the health actors need to be talked about, not just COVID, but then all of the negative health factors of being not able to go to class. And so I want the public to understand that we hear that, we acknowledge their thoughts. And I think we've said this before, but just to repeat, we're following guidelines and trying to do the right thing by metrics that are handed to us. And so we appreciate them, and I just reach my hand and heart out to people that are working so hard for their kids. It's a hard time, but thank you for your input.
Thank you, Jay. Any other further comments or future agenda items? Well, I see none. Really productive and great meeting. Thank you all, and have a wonderful evening. We are adjourned. Good night.